Good afternoon and welcome to the Public Safety and Government Operations Committee Meeting. In attendance today, we have, of course, myself, Chair of the Committee, Representative of the 4th District, Councilman Cohen, representing the 1st District, he's on virtually, Councilman Costello, representing the 11th District, Councilwoman Porter, representing Councilman Burnett is either running late or will be excused, and we will see from the remaining members. Representing the Office of the President, I have Preston. And representing the Mayor's Office, I have Natasha Mihiu. Oh, got Adam. Thank you, Adam. This afternoon, the committee will have a work session for Bill LO-21-0006, Quarterly Crime Stats and Violence Prevention Plan, for the purpose of the committee holding a hearing quarterly to review crime statistics for the Police Department and to monitor the progress of the biennial Violence Prevention Plan, although today we'll be using this LO to discuss the squeegee issue. This bill was introduced on March 8, 2021, and it was sponsored by myself, Councilman I want to thank the representatives from our city agencies for convening today to provide a public update on their efforts regarding the squeegee issue in Baltimore, both in providing support in social services and on the legal enforcement side. As I've told dozens of people who've reached out to my office over the past few weeks, I think the council and the public deserve a full and honest accounting of what's working, what's not working, and how we intend to adjust our current approach to get to the bottom of this issue. To that effect, today, we have invited the Baltimore City Police Department, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, the Sheriff's Department, and the State's Attorney's Office. It's clear that we're not going to solve this issue and its underlying challenges without everyone at the table. Young adults looking to earn money should have the opportunity to find and maintain a safe and sustainable job. Right now, we have a great deal of city agencies looking to fill vacancies for jobs that don't require significant experience and offer career pathways and attractive benefits. We also have businesses across the city eager to fill similar entry-level positions. I hope that we have a chance to dive into how we're connecting those dots and providing support to some of these young adults who need to keep a steady job. When it comes to enforcement, it's clear, just from my inbox, that there are many differences of opinion on these approaches. Of course, throwing squeegee workers into jail under the terms of a statute with debatable legality may temporarily clear the corner, but it still falls short of resolving the underlying issues that drive our young people to these intersections in the first place. At the same time, we've seen cases where squeegee workers commit more serious crimes that compromise the safety of our drivers and the workers themselves. Those crimes must have consequences. This is a charged and sensitive issue for many, so I want to thank everyone in advance for keeping your comments and questions respectful. We are here to have an honest and civil discussion, and we gain nothing by throwing around harmful stereotypes and crude language that may only inflame tensions. We will be allowing public testimony a little later on, both at the podium here and via WebEx, and with that, we'll start with agency reports and any presentations that they wish to provide. With that, I will turn it over to Deputy Mayor Leach.
Thank you Chairman Conway and members of the Public Safety Committee. My name is Faith Leach, and I serve as the Deputy Mayor of Equity, Health, and Human Services. I'm joined today by Dr. Andre Bundley from the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, Deputy Solicitor Ebbity Thompson, Shontae Jackson of the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement, and Police Commissioner Michael Harrison. I am approaching today's hearing from a place of thankfulness. I am thankful for employer partners like Dante and Jason at Revival Hotel. They are more than employers, they are mentors and purpose partners for our young people. I'm also thankful for Joe Jones, the founder of the Center for Urban Families, and John Brothers, the head of the T. Rowe Price Foundation, for their servant leadership of the Squeegee Collaborative. I am also thankful for the incredible work of the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement and staff like Tracy Estep and Monty's staff like Rick Leandry. They are the unsung heroes of this work. When the cameras and the journalists and the think pieces disappear, they don't. Instead, they continue to do what they have always done. They show up for our young people in the hard times. They celebrate their successes and the good times, and in between, they love our young people who squeegee fiercely. Now, I'll be honest, this work is hard, and it can be so tempting, so very tempting, to take the easy road out when it comes to young people who squeegee. But I can't, and I won't. Easy isn't what I was called to do. So when I'm tempted with taking the easy road, I think about staff like Tracy and Rick and Vernon, or young people like Davion and Said. I know that they don't need me to be right. Instead, they need me, and as a matter of fact, they need all of you council members and you media and every Baltimorean that is watching to do, let me repeat that, they need us to do what is right for Baltimore's young people. Doing what is right requires that we recognize the needs of our young people above the needs of our own. Doing what is right requires that we listen and that we learn, and we find the best solution. Not my solution, not your solution, not the easy solution, but the best solution. It also requires time, patience, effort, real investment, and consistency. More than two weeks ago, Mayor Scott called on youth and community, business, nonprofit, and philanthropic leaders to come together under the umbrella of the Squeegee Collaborative. These leaders have committed to rolling up their sleeves over the next few weeks to do the hard work of examining the root causes that drive our youth to squeegee and developing strategies in community with squeegee workers. The Squeegee Collaborative will build off of the work that MoAim has already been doing. Just in the past six months, MoAim has connected 42 youth to subsidized employment in partnership with MoEd. They also piloted a same-day work program in partnership with the Downtown Partnership of Baltimore, where they employed 24 young people to supplement the Downtown Partnership's Clean Corps during the CIA tournament. They also have made 19 additional employment offers for jobs at government agencies during an event that was held on July 7 at the Reginald F. Lewis Museum. MoAim has also engaged 30 youth, half of which are youth that squeegee, in a summer rites of passage program at Coppin State University. And today, right now, as we speak, on President and Lombard Streets, we are continuing our efforts to connect young people that squeegee with resources right on the corners where they squeegee. Through our Resources to the Corner events, we provide employment, housing, education, mental health, and other resources to our youth. If there are community members or council members, businesses or nonprofits that want to join one of our outreach events and connect directly with youth that squeegee, you can email TracyEStep, tracy.estep@baltimorecity.gov. We will hold Resources to the Corner events every Wednesday over the next month, rotating between President and Lombard and North Avenue and Mount Royal. I want to be clear, this is only a snapshot of the work that is happening at MoAim, and we acknowledge that there is more work that we need to do to tackle this work, to really scale our approach and deepen our impact and provide alternative pathways for young people that squeegee, and we're committed to doing just that. So in closing, I want to acknowledge a very hard truth. Squeegee workers are the byproduct of decades of disinvestment, racial inequality, and poverty in our city. It is no accident that our city has grappled with squeegeeing for more than 40 years. These young men and women that squeegee are a part of more than 18,000 disconnected young people in our city. But now, we have an opportunity. We have a moral obligation to finally do what is right for our city's young people. Many of you have heard me say that this work will require that we hold up a mirror to ourselves and to our city, and I firmly believe that. It will also require that we take stock of how we contributed to the broken systems and the failed policies that have led our young children, our young people, to stand on corners and hustle to make money for food, for shelter, and other basic needs. But there's opportunity in every challenge. Baltimore, we have the opportunity to serve as a national model of how to support black boys. We just have to meet this moment with the nuance and the care and the compassion that for far too long have been elusive for our squeegee workers. They're people just like you and me. They aren't a problem to be solved or a nuance that requires clearing. They are Davion. They are Said. They are Jerry. They are the sons of Baltimore, and they deserve our very best. Thank you for allowing me to testify today. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Leach. I want to acknowledge Councilman Glover of the 13th District, who's joined us virtually, and Councilwoman Ramos of the 14th District, who has also joined us virtually.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next up, do we have Adam? Do we have young people that, yes.
No, again, I just would like to.
Can you state your name and your affiliation, please?
Thank you. My name is Andre Bundley, Director of the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, and I am thankful for this hearing. I'd like to echo, but I won't, some of the things that the Deputy Mayor has already stated. I'm excited that we're well on the way to getting this issue addressed because we are collaboratively coming together with strategies that make the difference. We need a, we have a culture, this is a cultural issue, and we need to change the culture, but it's, all of the culture is not bad. And so when we look at evidence-based practice of culture, it requires three things. It requires intervention, which is fraught with opportunity. It requires education, and it requires legislation/rules. Not rules, punitive rules, but go-to rules that are legitimate and that we can educate individuals around. This process has worked. I've done it for 15 years, particularly when I was a principal in the school system as the intervention manager, sent out to the schools that were having difficulty, and I had to step in mid-year and begin to do culture change. And culture change is a process, right? But we have to have the opportunities. Deputy Mayor Leach just read from the slide that produced to her from our office about the things that are already happening. We just have to get to directly on the corner where they are. There are 25 corners in Baltimore. We know that there are 25 because we've taken good care to identify them. And we've met Lance, we've met Davion and the other individuals that the Deputy Mayor named on those corners. But there has to be direct action of individuals who are willing to go to the corner because of all of the stereotypes and perceptions around black boys and young black men. And so we're going to get there. I'm excited about the meeting we had yesterday, and I'm just, I know we're going to get there because I'm charged as one of the directors where basically the essence of the work with all of the support of my colleagues, right? It's going to get done. I'm clear it's going to get done. Just as we intervened in those schools to begin to do what we needed to do for those children in those schools, we're going to intervene in these spaces, but we're going to do it collaboratively, and historically, that hasn't been done. So we're at the fulcrum point or an inflection point in our city government where we can begin to do good things and do right by our children. I'm excited about that. I'm confident that it's going to happen, and so I yield back.
Thank you, Dr. Bundley. Appreciate you. And I understand we have young people, two young people that wanted to testify. Please step up to the podium, state your name for the record.
My name is Davion Hodges, 22-years-old, male from Baltimore, here basically. And I don't really like, like, what am I basically supposed to speak?
Into the mic. Into the mic.
Okay, so y'all want me to, I'll just tell my story. All right, so when I first got into the Office of Male Engagement and everything, I was going through a lot of stuff. I just lost my mother, a whole bunch of stuff, and like, everything else was going on. I ain't really like, used to squeegee or nothing, but I was just being humble with it, a lot of stuff, so. Carrying a lot of stuff and like, with somebody to guide you and how to guide that stuff that you carrying, that's like what people really need, instead of carrying that stuff and taking it the wrong way. So like, what Dr. Bundley said, like, when I met him, told me, I reminded him a lot of himself, basically, because when his mother passed away, it taught him to keep going instead of giving up. So I learned how to make that, just keep me going, and that's all he been teaching me, like, just to never give up, keep going, and like, it'll just save you in the long run. So like, whenever I'm doing something good, just always look out for the next person. So like, anybody that's look like me or act like me any type of way, or I feel as though that they got some resemblance to me, I always look out for them, always. So that's all I've really got to say right now.
Thank you.
My name is Lance.
You can, if you feel free to take down your mask.
Okay. So I was collaborated with the squeegee program since maybe like, early 2019. Before then, like, my best friend died, maybe a year before that. It put me in a tough situation, like, I like, dropped out of school, and it was hard to find a job, so I turned to squeegeeing, you feel me? So, and like, after a couple months, I just felt like, like, that wasn't enough, you know? Like, it was something, it just felt like it was something missing. So I met Ms. Tracy, Dr. Bundley, and others, and they just offered growth, opportunity, and knowledge, like, and to this day, I'm still learning from them. Like, I'm in a way better situation than I was, like, a few years ago. Like, it wasn't even just about them, like, paying us to be on a program, you feel me? Like, I really grew as a person, like, going through that process, and like, I'm just grateful for the opportunity. That's it.
Thank you. All right, next, we will go on to the Police Department.
I don't have any opening remarks, other than thank you for the hearing. We're happy to be here, and my team and I, along with other members of the Mayor's team, we're all prepared to answer questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. And next up, I have the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement.
Thank you Chairman Conway and members of the committee. The Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Safety and Engagement stands behind the administration's holistic approach and multifaceted approach led by Deputy Mayor Leach and by MoAim to address the concerns associated with our young people who wash vehicle windows as a source of income. We are one of the agencies participating in the Squeegee Collaborative meetings that were kicked off by the mayor earlier this month. At a high level, the work that involves our young people intersects with Monty's youth justice-related work that's outlined in the Comprehensive Violence Prevention Plan. And we all know, as you mentioned in your opening remarks, that there are historical and systemic reasons that contribute to why our young people feel as though they have no other option associated with income. We also know that equitable access to human services, quality education, healthy environmental and infrastructure systems are inextricably tied to those healthy alternatives for our young people so that they don't feel like they have to resort to the corner. Under the mayor's leadership, Monty stands proud to coordinate any efforts associated with addressing these factors on the front end, on the preventative end, associated with the Violence Prevention Plan, and we look forward to continuing to partner with the Deputy Mayor and the Director.
Next up, we've got the State's Attorney's Office.
Thank you, and I can just tell you, as a former teacher, a defense attorney, and as a deputy, that everything that has already been said is our mindset, and we thank the committee for being invited, and we are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Now we'll open up the Florida questions from the committee. I'll start with a few of my own. My first question is, how aggressively, this is for Mayor's Office, Deputy Mayor Leach, how aggressively are your teams engaging the squeegee workers when offering services? What does engagement look like? How often? What time of day? Give me some insight on that.
Absolutely. I'll start off, and then I will turn it over to Dr. Bundley to talk through kind of the nuances of our approach. But this work is day in and day out. It's 24 hours a day. There isn't a clock in and a clock out when it comes to supporting our young people in the city. I know I answer the call in the middle of the night, as well as Tracy, Dr. Bundley, and so many others. But as it relates to that direct outreach, our staff are out on those corners seven days a week. We have rotating shifts where we send our outreach workers out, but they are divided amongst 25 high-traffic intersections. So Dr. Bundley will talk through some of the stats around squeegeeing, just to kind of set the, lay the ground. But we know that there are at least 160 or more young people who participate in squeegee, squeegee activity. Some of them are consistent, and they're there, you know, day in and day out. Others, you know, they pop in and they pop out whenever there's a need. We also have identified at least 25 intersections, but that changes daily and weekly as new young people or new squeegee workers decide to identify new intersections. And so, you know, when you talk about the work that happens in MoAim, it's a very small staff, and yet they're having to kind of monitor and connect with young people across all of those major intersections throughout the city. I'll turn it over to Dr. Bundley. He can talk a little bit more about our outreach workers, the kind of time that they're out there, but as they are out there, they're engaging with young people. As we have available opportunities, they're aggressively connecting them with opportunities. We decided to launch Resources to the Corners because it's not just about the outreach workers being on those corners, it's about, you know, ensuring that our young people are connected with those basic needs like mental health support and housing, because oftentimes, the outreach workers identify the need, but our young people need resources immediately. And so that's why we launched Resources to the Corner, so that we could bring all of our partners out with us on those corners to directly engage and support young people in the moment. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Bundley.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, Mr. Chair. I am, I have a renewed sense of urgency, given the things that happened to citizens, both our youth and the adults in our city. My renewed sense of urgency is, and excitement comes from the meeting we had yesterday with our collaborative partners. And in our group yesterday, one of the things that I emphasize with our group, and I know it will emerge, this notion of soliciting the support of more direct-action partners. Direct-action partners who will help us on the 25 corners, not just the targeted corners, but all 25 corners ideally, to ask the question that we ask all of our young people. What do you need? What do you need? And we get these redundant answers around the question, and they're redundant. Man, I need to get back in school. Man, I need to eat, I'm hungry. I need housing. As Davion just said, because we share that in common, my mother just died, and I need somebody to talk to. So we need collaborative partners, excuse me, because whenever I talk about my mother, whom I lost at 13, it's wild into my brain. So we need more collaborative partners who are willing to be in the space of our young people, right? And we need resources that are real and ready. Everybody was concerned about the CIA. Even our mayor wanted to make certain that we wanted to show up good because we wanted to have the CIA again, and they were concerned about our youth that squeegee. But we use one of our evidence-based practice of one day's work for one day's pay. We leveraged our relationships, those of us who are not scared of our children, and say, "Come with me, we not squeegeeing today. What you going to make today, we're going to give you after you clean up in the city under our supervision." So we swapped the venue, we call it swappable income. We swapped the venue from squeegeeing on the corner to cleaning downtown under supervision, there were no individuals on the corner. Those are real, ready resources, but we need resources in our pocket the same way for housing, the same way for food insecurity, the same way for getting them clothes if they don't have the appropriate clothes for the job interview. This stuff has to be real and ready. Again, that's why I'm saying, historically, so when you look at it, we have 117 active youth. We have five credible mentors. When they talk about 24-hour call, our credible mentors are on 24-hour call. So again, basically, we have the infrastructure. We're poised for success. We want the other resources. We will build the army of individuals who love our children and are not afraid of our children. Will we build the resources? Everybody says that Baltimore City is this, Baltimore City is that, and they point to Mayor Brandon Scott. Mayor Brandon Scott is not Baltimore City, he's the lead executive of Baltimore City. We're Baltimore City. So will all of Baltimore step up? That's my question. Did they step up for me? Of course. I'm here today after having lived in five foster homes, mother dying at 13, and graduated from one of the fifth-most prestigious universities in the world with a doctor degree. Somebody stepped up. It wasn't lip service that I got, I got real service. So I'm just saying, we are poised for success. We have everybody that cares. We have our young people who are listening. We have individuals that are not afraid to engage them. Will Baltimore step up? That's my question.
I want to, I really, I really appreciate the work you guys are doing, and I think the crux of my question is based on the fact that we're still falling short. And the question was, how aggressively are we engaging squeegee workers? I guess I could ask a number of things here. How many people do we have on this? How often are they out there? What time of day are they out there? What time of day is working well, and what other times of day are not working well, given, you know, maybe they're there during rush hour or not? What do we know about our, I understand and agree with our approach, especially on the social services side, but it hasn't yielded the outcomes we want to see yet, and why not? I'd love to get a little more insight on that.
Yep, so I think, so I think there are lots to unpack there. I think that, you know, for those young people, those 42 young people that were connected to employment, I think it's yielded great outcomes for them. So I do want to be very careful about how we talk about this issue and how we talk about our young people. Those young people are a success, right? And just because there are still additional young people on that corner, that doesn't mean that that is, that there is not work that's happening and that there is not success stories, right? The thing about our young people that present with the types of challenges that many of our young people that squeegee present with is that they are navigating some trauma that many of us cannot imagine. And so there is no silver bullet, right? There may be a young person that we are able to connect to today, something traumatic happens, and then they're back out there on that corner, right? They get frustrated at work, and they decide to give up. And so. They get frustrated at work, and they decide to give up. And so, we can't and we don't give up on our young people. But to get into the specifics of what the outreach looks like, so Dr. Bundley talked about our five credible messengers. They are not city employees. They are supposed to be part-time workers, but they work around the clock. And that is through a partnership with New Visions, and this is work that is, that we partner with the Family League of Baltimore on. They have over 100, excuse me, they have over 50 young people on their caseload. Dr. Bundley talked about the numbers of young people that are still actively engaged in our system. So, at one point, we've touched over 160 young people in this city, but many of them disengage, meaning that our outreach workers reach out, they haven't spoken to them for 30 days, for 60 days, right? And so, they do the hard work of trying to figure out and find our young people and reconnect them. So, again, I want to be, you know, very clear about the individualized work that is happening on the ground. We actually spend time when we connect with young people, and we ask them, you know, what their interests are, right? We develop what we call an individual development plan with every young person that we see. So, right now, on those corners at President and Lombard, we are going out into medians, and we are connecting with those young people and getting them to sit down with us and engage with us and tell us what their interests are, what their challenges are. And we have to be ready to respond with those resources that Dr. Bundley talks about. Again, I talked about those 25 corners, and I talked about our limited staffing capacity. So, our outreach workers are out on those corners. They're oftentimes rotating. So, you may not see outreach workers for five hours at President Street, right? You may see them at President and Lombard. We get a citizen call, or something comes in from 311, and then they're over at Mount Royal and I-83, right? So, they are transversing our city and engaging with our young people. There are a couple of things that we've worked on around engagement. So, our young people, excuse me, our outreach workers are now wearing MoAim shirts, so you should see them. They're in bright yellow whenever you see our outreach staff out. Oftentimes, they may be engaging young people that squeegee. There are also other young people in the vicinity that they're engaging with as well, right? So, outreach looks, it's gonna look different depending on the scenario. But generally, our outreach workers are rotating between the hours of 9:00 and 6:00. We generally have outreach workers out 12:00 noon is kind of a peak time where we start to see a lot more young people that squeegee. In the morning, we see, you know, a couple of young people that, you know, get out early to hustle, but we see larger numbers starting in the early afternoon, and by the time it's rush hour in the evening. And so, you know, that's when we are trying to strategically deploy our outreach workers, but of course, they can't be over the, across the entire city. The other thing that I want to put on the table here is equity, right? I mentioned 25 corners. Those 25 corners are not all in downtown. And so, we approach this work from an equity lens. So, that means that when there are calls that are coming in from Hilton or elsewhere in the city, we're also being responsive to those calls as well and not just focusing on downtown.
May I add to that, the, one of the things we talked about in our subcommittee yesterday was changing the language. We have 21 youngsters that are thriving, that were on the corner. They're no longer on the corner. Someone else has taken their place. So, this definition of what success is in the mind of Baltimore is that they would just disappear from the corner. But all of us, that's an emotional request. That's not a realistic one, because they just can't disappear when you look at comprehensively supporting them. Forty-two of them are thriving. They're on, in jobs. The other, the 21 that I talked about, we don't even have the, they say, "I got this now. I feel good. They're in a place." So, again, we're gonna get there. We have the model. How do we expand it? That, those, that's my thinking, the deputy mayor's thinking, who is so very hands-on, I've never seen a deputy mayor's hands-on this herself. But that's our thinking, that we expand and accelerate, not them being off the corner, but them substantively grasping what it is that they need to be Ebony. I worked with her mom. She's an attorney now. We want them to grasp, as Ebony grasped, what it was in her vision, her positive and constructive pathway forward through her personal growth plan, which we have for every young person we touch. What is it that you want to become? And so, that's a process, and it's not gonna be magic. It's gonna be all hands on deck, and we can train people to get out there so we can have the numbers to do the direct action in an equitable way, as the deputy mayor said, wherever our young people are.
Thank you. I'm gonna turn it over to one of my colleagues, and for those in the back, we have testimony at the end of this portion. So, just hold up. I'm gonna turn it over to Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you say Glover?
I'm sorry. I said Porter.
I'm sorry.
I'll get to you after we get to the folks here, all right?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. And so, I just want to congratulate all of you all for really a successful program. However, I have serious concerns about the operationalizing of this particular program. So, most of my questions are gonna be focused on how we're operationalizing this program with inter-agency agreements are in place with regard to not only DOT, BPD, but also some of the other agencies that are kind of really in the thick of this. And then lastly, I'm gonna be asking about what, how is this gonna be sustainable moving forward post FY '23? So, most of, I'm gonna ask two of my questions. I have to leave for full disclosure for the public. I have to leave for an appointment at 2:00, so my additional questions will be answered by my colleague, Councilwoman Odette Ramos. So, my first question actually has to do with, Dr. Bundley, you mentioned this program starting in 2019. Can you share, from my knowledge, has there been any program related to squeegeeing previous to this administration, and how have those outcomes been used as a lessons learned for this administration?
I have, thank you. I have not reached, the Squeegee Alternative Plan came into the mayor's office of African-American male engagement. I always try to do history, and so I haven't seen any history where the youngsters who started squeegeeing back in 1970, up to this point, I have seen, I've seen no history of pulling together and codifying the work like we have done in the last two years.
Okay. And so, correct me if I'm wrong, under former Mayor Catherine Pugh, there was an initiative similar to this?
Starting. That's when it started.
How is that different from the initiative that we're doing now?
Well, the former mayor looked at certain places to kind of off-ramp. She looked at it from an entrepreneurial sense, and we are looking at that even still. But she, for example, I'll give you an example. There's a gas station at the corner of McCullough and North Avenue, a little bit outside your district, right? And that gas station, she was looking to get that gas station to off-ramp youngsters who squeegee, get them to buy into it, to own it, have individuals help them own it, for them to be able to work it, buy stock in it, the whole nine. She looked at it from a more entrepreneurial, wide visionary sense. What we know is the mediacy of what's happening, so we started dealing with it in clusters of youngsters, but then individualizing the support for them by way of corners, and then trying to get them to the place that they need to go. So, that's how, that's the difference in the past and what we're doing presently.
Okay. And so, more specifically, if you can kind of like, if you can share some performance metrics, some outcomes, like that kind of distinguish the two, I think that would be really, really helpful for me. Because, you know, Deputy Mayor Leach, I know we have spoken on a number of occasions. I also want to share, you are one of the hardest-working deputy mayors in the city, so I'm so grateful for you. But as you, as you know, when we have conversations, I want to see, you know, performance metrics, because when we, as a council, have to account for those tax dollars back to the taxpayer, we want to make sure that we are providing metrics of success and quality so that people are increasing their quality of life, not only for our taxpayers, but also for the young people that we are serving as well. I want to make sure that they are getting a quality program. One, I'm sorry, sir. Oh, I want to make sure that they're getting a quality program, one that is measured, and one that is kind of like really looking for sustainable metrics 10, 15 years down the line. My second question, you mentioned 25 neighborhoods, but in your opening remarks, you only mentioned three intersections. Can you share those 25, did I miss something?
Twenty-five intersections.
Twenty-five intersections. Can you share those 25 intersections and kind of their, their spread across the city?
I don't have the list, but I can, because we do the work.
Yes, sir.
So, let's start on the further outreaches. We talk about St. Clair Lane and Moravee. Come back in to Echo Dale and another place. We can go to Hilton and, we can go to Hilton, thank you. We can go to Hilton and Gwyn Falls. We can go to North Avenue and Hilton. We could go to St. Paul and North Avenue. We can go to President Street with all of the various, the corners from Lombard to Baltimore, et cetera, that corridor. We could go to Conway and Light. So, I have all of them, right? But I haven't committed all of them to memory.
Can you provide that to the committee?
We have them, and we have a, I have Tracy to send it. She probably has it right now, if she's that efficient. But, so Tracy, please send that to the chair, please.
No worries. Thank you so much, Dr. Bundley.
You're welcome.
And lastly, Mr. Chair, if you can indulge me for two minutes. So, young people that testified today, I just want to let you know, I was in that position, working, you know, in high school as a janitor to support my tuition, working for jobs in college, and now I'm a scientist from one of the leading institutions in the nation. And so, when I tell you that Baltimore grit that you're experiencing, that Baltimore resiliency, that's gonna take you all throughout your life, and I want to encourage you to keep that in your heart and keep that moving forward, because there are already people that are counting you out. Real talk. There are already people that are counting you out, and you want to make sure that you use that as a driver. You use that as a driver towards your vision and your dreams, to make your life and your family's lives better for overall Baltimore. People don't care about, you know, sad to say, people don't care about, you know, what you're going through or what you're, you know, supposedly going through. And that's a real harm in our society. But I want to let you know that people on this council care, we are really focused on operationalizing this program to maximize success so that you have the greatest potential, the greatest potential in order for you to achieve any and everything that you want in your life. So, I just want to commend you for coming to City Hall, for testifying today. There are not many people that know where City Hall is. There are not many people that have ever testified at City Hall. There are not many people that know who their local representatives are at City Hall. So, I commend you for coming here today and showing your face and showing that this program and this type of systemic issue has a name, it has a face, and it has a family behind it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. To that effect...
I'm sorry. Can I, can I take a moment just to respond to the piece about the performance metrics, which I'll be very quick on? So, we actually use a case management database called CAP-60. And so, that's where we have, all young people that we encounter are actually in that database, and that's where we enter information about our encounters with those young people, and we're able to track kind of where they are, if they're employed, if they've disconnected. In addition, we do have performance measures. And so, we're looking at things like, how many young people are we connecting to employment? And not just how many young people are connected to employment, because we have to have a very real conversation about connection to employment. It's really about how many of those young people are persisting? How many of those young people are continuing in employment six months, you know, into the, into a job, or a year into a job? And we're also reconnecting our young people back to school. The thing that we should be very clear about today, we have seen young people in the city as young as seven to 10 years old out on corners with a squeegee. I can't give those kids a job, right? I can't, I mean, I may can help them start a business, but that's not sustainable, right? And so, we, again, there is no silver bullet, right? And so, while we are tracking things like employment, and we are doing that work like employment, there's some deeper family work that needs to happen so that we are preventing young people as young as 10 years old to be out on those corners with squeegees.
No, I appreciate that Deputy Mayor Leach, and I just want to, I just want to clarify. When I'm thinking about performance metrics, I know we had talked about this before. I'm not looking for a quantity. I'm looking for quality-based, yeah, quality-based performance metrics that, you know, tie into an inter-agency approach, intergenerational approach, and also a approach that not only includes the person, the person, but also the family as well.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. I want to touch on two, two things. So, first, Councilwoman Porter, you addressed the two young men, and I'm curious, both those young men, you both are older than 21 at the moment, right? 20. Two young men who are old enough to work for the city. Have we offered these two young men jobs at the city?
They work at Revival Hotel.
Excellent. I think once again, time and time again, as we're identifying those that are eligible to work for the city, we have a number of vacancies, and these aren't just jobs. These are careers. And there's upward trajectory for these jobs, and so I want to make sure that every opportunity we have, if these young men are interested in working, and not just working, but getting into a career, that's what we're here for.
And Mr. Chair, one of the things that, and I wanted to share this. When they're at Revival Hotel, we're subsidizing their wages, but we're also guiding their heads in their hearts, because where they start out, they need more than just a job, right? They need comprehensive support, right? So, we can't just give, because we've gotten a lot of individuals' jobs. But we get a call to say, "Dr. Bundley, man, I'm not, I'm done, man." I say, "What's wrong? This guy keep telling me what to do." I'm like, "Well, who is the guy?" And then I find out the guy's the supervisor. So, we, I hadn't done my job well. I said, "Well, that's what supervisors do. Faith Leach tells me what to do." So, I mean, we, there's some work that goes with that. I just want you to know.
I appreciate that.
And on the government jobs piece, I think that is an important point and an important question that you raised. So, just on July 7th, we had an event. We had DOT, DPW, Wreckin' Parks, and a couple of other city agencies at the Reginald F. Lewis Museum, and they made on-the-spot job offers. And we were able to make offers to 19 young people on that day. And so, we're, that was our first time doing that particular effort. But we've been working very closely with the mayor's office on employment development to be able to identify those city jobs that we can prepare our young people who squeegee for. And so, most of the jobs, as Dr. Bundley mentioned, are subsidized by the city, whether they are private employers, or of course, whether they work for a city government agency. It is a part of the higher-up program that MoED manages. We just kind of carve out specific spots for young people that squeegee.
Yeah. I appreciate all that, and I think, Dr. Bundley, to your point earlier about meeting the other supports. So, before I came on to council, I ran a workforce development program. And we were able to find people jobs, but it was the same problem that I think you guys are experienced, experiencing, where not all, not all the time are those folks ready for those jobs. Not all the time do those folks have housing. They may be dealing with a number of other issues, addiction, issues with their family and otherwise, and they need help in those areas. And it sort of begs the question, what are we providing there? And could we be partnering, if not we provide it, our partners across the city? There are a number of nonprofits that do exactly this kind of work. I don't want to talk too much. I know I have some colleagues virtually that have questions. So, I'm gonna hand off to Councilman Cohen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to all the agency reps, Deputy Mayor Leach. And I do want to shout out Dr. Bundley and his team, who are completely heart-led and who are out there. Deputy Mayor Leach, on July 13th, I wrote you a letter asking for an all-in strategy to address squeegee workers. I asked that we bring all parties to the table, including children that squeegee, nonprofits, electeds, government agencies, the business community, and others to create a plan that represents the entire city, not just the mayor. I believe that in the past, we've had multiple mayors, each come with their own plan, and invariably, it fails underneath their own weight. And I do want to say, I appreciate that you did that. It's been an honor to participate with my colleague, Councilmember Burnett, in the first two squeegee collaborative meetings. Thank you for that. I also agree with you that this is a gut-check moment for Baltimore. Can we solve serious issues, and can we take care of our children? I also suggested that we need everyone stepping up to support the folks that participate in this work. Every city agency, build with our business community, having nonprofits that shoulder the work, and center it on the voices of young people and adults that squeegee. I also suggested enforcement led by Dr. Bundley, his team, Safe Streets, the Peace Team, and others. I believe this activity is unsafe, unhealthy, and beneath the greatness and dignity of our young people. So, here's my question. We know that many of the young people that squeegee have needs... my question. We know that many of the young people that squeegee have needs that are simply not being met. Many of the young people have issues, as has been stated, with housing stability, health, mental health, academics, and more. My question is, would this not be a great test case for universal basic income? If our kids need money to survive, should we not give it to them? Pay them to participate in trade school, or apprenticeship, or work, but pay them. And pay them on a daily basis. And make it clear that they can't continue to squeegee, but that we are going to support them on whatever path they want to get to.
So, so thank you for that question. I actually think that the question around UBI is an interesting one. I think it's an interesting approach, as I think everyone knows, the mayor launched the Baltimore Young Families Success Fund, which is a universal basic income pilot here in the city of Baltimore, focused on young families. And many of our young people that squeegee do have families of their own. So they are fathers and they are mothers. And so I do think that the UBI process and just UBI in and of itself does give the young people agency to make some decisions about what they need and what they want to do with their lives. I think there are a couple of things that we have to work through and that we have to consider. As I've mentioned, just, you know, just a few moments ago, we have young people that are under the age of 18 that squeegee. We have young people who are 10 years old or less that squeegee, right? And so, there, there would be challenges applying UBI to those young people, although we have seen UBI be successful through the child tax credit, as far as supporting families. So I think that there are some nuances, but I love the idea of UBI, and figuring out a way that it could potentially support this population. But as you mentioned, you know, we're going through a process as a city, right? This isn't for the mayor to decide alone, right? We are doing this in collaboration and in partnership with community members, young people that squeegee, business leaders. And so I think UBI is an approach that will be put on the table as a part of the squeegee collaborative, for us to discuss the merits of UBI as it relates to supporting squeegee workers.
No, I appreciate that. And I do recognize the complexity of it, and the reality that we are already doing this with one population. I'll just state, sort of in conclusion, that, you know, I know from the work that Councilmember Ramos and I are doing on trauma, that when your basic needs are not being met, and you are constantly in fight-or-flight mode, that you can't do much. You can't function academically. To Dr. Bunley's point, you can't hold down a job. You can't, in many cases, even get to the job. Many of our children, as you've stated, have experienced an enormous amount of trauma, which is why they are out on corners, running in and out of traffic. I do believe that meeting their basic needs is critical, and that UBI should be, at the very least, a part of that foundation. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you again for the work, Deputy Mayor, and everybody else.
Thank you, Councilman Cohen. I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Ramos, and then Councilman Glover, I've got you right after.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, colleagues. I want to apologize to everybody who made the time to come to City Hall. I would normally be there with you. I enjoy being in City Hall. I'm getting over COVID, and I'm feeling much better. Thank you to everybody who's reached out. And I want to particularly thank our young people that are here, and lifting their voices. I wanted to make sure that, that we hear from our young people, because my colleague said it best, I won't repeat her powerful words, but it's, it's so important to lift your voices, and I really appreciate that you're here. So my question is, going back to what my colleague talked about around meeting basic needs. It has been, as many of you have already heard me say a million times, my contention that many of the challenges that we're facing have a lot to do with unstable housing, living in neighborhoods that it feels like, you know, the city doesn't care. So, you know, why should we, or, you know, why should the community? And so, I wanted to hear from Dr. Bunley, maybe, you know, what, tell us a little bit more about the housing need. Is it 100% of your young people that you're working with that need? Are, is it, you know, 10%? I'd be very interested to know that. And let me just back up and say that I think that, you know, we continue to work hard to address the, you know, past racist policies that got us here, and yet we still have a long way to go. So this is part of the, the work. So, Dr. Bunley?
Yes, Councilwoman Ramos, thank you for the question. I would say, and again, I'm going to go back and now and drill down and look at a little more data in terms of when we have a intimate conversation with a youngster around their personal growth plan, and the housing issue comes up. I know it comes up, it's 100%, that person needs that house or that housing situation remedied 100%. So I, but in terms of the actual number of all of the youngsters that we touch, I don't have it to give you an exact number, but I will say, it is a redundant theme, along with the issue of, of us being able to see that a youngster needs some counseling, because they're traumatized because of some events that they articulate. So housing comes up, drug treatment comes up, and jobs obviously come up. So those things, but I will, I can't give you an actual number when we look at the aggregate number of individuals that we touch, and how many times, how many went, needed the housing request versus not needing the housing request. But that gives me thought about, about how we can begin to capture that data as well. But I know it's a redundant theme, and we know we need to have access, a real-ready access to housing when it comes up. But we'll, we'll, we'll work on that.
Yeah, that could be part of the, the data that you're going to be collecting, and part of, I think, the outcomes that the councilwoman talked about, is, you know, if they're coming to us and telling us they have this need, then we need to make sure that those needs are met.
Right.
And we need to document all of that. And so if we can make sure that that's part of the, the data, that's, that's super important. And we'd like to hear a, a report, you know, maybe quarterly or something, how that, how that is going. Because the other thing is that I want to be able to figure out what's the best way to help. Do we need more rental assistance? Do we need to address the poor-quality housing that might be in their home with their families? Do we need, you know, all of that? It's going to be extremely helpful. I think all of the above answer is yes.
Yes.
But it's always helpful to, to be able to, to have the data, and I appreciate that.
We'll be able to get that, because we do have an aggregate number in terms of active youth. So we can go back to our, through our active youth, and see what, how many housing requests were made. But that aggregate number changes. So we're doing a percentage, but it's always from the active youth. But we can access that.
And it could be, yeah, and it could be that they, the young people might need to get out of a situation.
Right.
Right? It could be that their family's not living in good conditions. It could be that they're about to be evicted. I mean, there's a, a number of them.
Yes.
So it would be great to, to get some information about that. And this leads me to my second question. I've been super clear, started this last year, but I haven't finished it, about making sure that there's data sharing among the agencies, and that there's, you know, if, let's say that there's a, a young person, whether they're on the corner or not, who wants to be able to have some services, that they should be able to get them in whatever entry point is out there. So I guess my initial question is, you, you talked about the CAP-60 database. I want to make sure that all of the entities that are working on this have access to that and are sharing data, so that everybody understands what's happening. Because also, the young person, if you say, "Okay, call this, that, the other," that young person may not do that. And so there has to be the integration of the systems to make sure that the young person is connected in a way that is proactive, and that is, so that, and it also takes the case management, as you said. I, I think we're going to need more case managers. Five of them is not going to be enough, and let's figure out how to make that happen, to, to make that work.
Yes.
So I thank you for the question on data sharing. As you know, Councilwoman Ramos, we worked very closely with the school system and Baltimore's promise to, to pass legislation around the Baltimore Youth Data Hub, which would allow us to actually share data between the school system and soon, hopefully, nonprofit partners. And so I think, you know, the work that we're doing around squeegee youth is a perfect test, test case, if you will, for the Baltimore Youth Data Hub. I think this idea of no wrong door is absolutely right. But we are not sending our young people to knock on the doors, right? We are doing that work with them. So that is what their credible mentors and the other staff within MoAM are doing. They are working with those young people and, you know, ensuring that they get to, you know, that meeting with housing, or that they're getting to that job interview, right? And so we're providing them resources like, you know, bus, bus cars or bus passes, right? We're, we're paying for them to be able to get to those job interviews. We call them before they go. Sometimes we pick them up, right, like we did today. So our team is deeply, deeply engaged. And so we're not just, you know, sending young people out to go figure out how to get an ID. We're giving them some agency, and we're helping them navigate, but also allowing them to, you know, make some of these decisions on their own, but we're with them every step of the way. But you're right, data sharing is of the utmost importance here.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Mr. Chair, I have Councilwoman Porter's questions, but I can wait till my other colleagues. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll, I'll, I'll keep moving on, and we'll come back around to you. My, my next question is, of course, back to the sort of carrot side of things. When a worker gets a job through, through our program, are we keeping tabs on those workers and providing any support possible to make sure that they continue to hold a job, or that if they do separate from that job, we can help them move on to the next opportunity?
Absolutely. So that's one of the performance metrics that I mentioned earlier, is that we are tracking youth and how long that, and how long they are employed at various employers. And if these employers are, you know, getting their wages subsidized by the city, then those young people have credible mentors that are checking in with them. We're also checking in with their managers, right? Tracy's very good about calling Dante and Jason at Revival, or the folks at Canopy, to check in and see how our young people are doing, especially if we see them out on the corner squeegeeing when they should be at work. So we are absolutely tracking young people who are able to sustain employment. Now, again, we're going to be very real here about the challenges that our young people face. And so not all of them keep jobs for six months or a year. And so there are some young people that this may be the third time that they've come back into our program, and we've gotten them another job, right? And so I think that is where the job readiness work that you mentioned earlier comes into play. And so I do want to spend a moment talking about that. So, the Mayor's Office of Employment Development, they do job readiness, right? They do a week-long job readiness program in support of our young people. Oftentimes, MoAM will supplement that. So when we first, so when we launched the 90-Day Squeegee Action Plan, I talked about like this employer collaborative or employer coalition. And so, we actually spent a month with our young people before we ever sent them to Canopy Hotel or Revival Hotel, right? We, we did very intensive case management with them. We did some scenario planning. We spent, you know, a, a good amount of time with them before sending them off to these corporate settings. I think anybody that has worked in corporate or government or nonprofit, there are challenges with those environments. So imagine sending a young person as their first real job, you know, into this brand-new setting directly off of a corner, right? And so we work to ensure that those young people, you know, had that job readiness coaching. We ensure that they had the proper attire, right? Like that, these are the types of things that go into a program like this. We are oftentimes, you know, buying the appropriate attire, making sure that folks get haircuts, just to ensure that they're ready to go to work. And so that's the intentionality that we have in a program like this, which is also some challenges around scaling, right? Because it has to be so individualized in order, you know, for us to see the type of long-term success that we want to see with our young people.
And Deputy Mayor, I want to add, and we have to subsidize them being with us and not on the corner squeegeeing, because if it's a hunger need, a food insecurity need, it's still there. So we have to subsidize the income that they would get by squeegeeing while they're with us for an entire month. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to questions from Councilman Glover, and then I see Councilwoman Burnett has also got a question. Councilman Glover? Councilman Glover, we can't hear you if you're talking. All right, we'll come back to Councilman Glover and move on to Councilman Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The one, I just want to thank, the, the, hold on one second. Can you come back to me, Mr. Chair? Sorry, one second.
Sure.
I'm having some problems here. I'll, I'll raise my hand again, one second.
Okay. No, not a problem at all. We'll come back to you. Councilman Glover, one more time before we move on. All right, well, I'll, I'll ask another question before coming back to Councilman Burnett. This, this question is actually for BPD. Realizing that we still have instances that are problematic and interactions at our intersections, I'll give you a scenario, and I, I want you to help me think about how we currently resolve this, and talk, talk me through why we came to that. So if a person is in a car, stopped at an intersection, and someone bangs on the window and dumps Windex on their car, what should the driver do? And if there's an officer at the intersection observing that action, how would they be told to react?
Thank you for that. If Windex, as in this scenario, is dumped on the car, that's unwanted criminal behavior. That constitutes what we would say is damage to the vehicle. That's, that's enforceable. The, the person is the complainant would call the police. We would come out to the location, take a report, or they can go somewhere where we can meet them. Then it becomes a matter of looking for the person who did that. We would have to find the person who did it. So we'd need a description from the complainant. So if, if they damaged the car in any way, or if they poured this liquid, which we would not know if it's Windex, it could be something else that could take the paint off the car or cause some other kind of damage. And so we wouldn't know until we actually came out. It would require the person to follow, call the police and file a complaint, but it would require us to meet with them, speak with them in some fashion, to take that information, get a description, and try to ascertain who the person is, so that we can go out and enforce it against that individual or that group of individuals.
I see. So if there's an incident where someone crosses that line, we are enforcing?
We are, and we have been. And there are cases where damage to cars have, has been done by a person. People have called. We have met with them, either in person, or they went to a police station. We had an, some kind of identification through them or another witness, and we've gone to the location. We found people who committed the damage. We've enforced it against those people, through arrests or through other means. There have been times where we have not been able to identify. There have been times, it has happened, people called the police, but we haven't been able to identify the perpetrator. Or the person called the police but did not want to follow through with filing criminal charges. All of those have happened. But when that happens, we absolutely enforce, we have done it. We will continue to do it.
And do you know how many summons or fines have been issued at intersections connected to squeegee workers this calendar year? How many arrests? And what are those charges generally from, if we have that information?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon. In reference to fines, no, we don't have the information. We'll try to pull that right now. In reference to arrest, year-to-date, we know of two incidents that we have arrested, made arrests on. As the Police Commissioner said, when we do identify these individuals, it is up to the complainant. A lot of times, what we are seeing is complainants, for one reason or another, cannot make a positive ID once we do find an individual matching that description, or because of their own sympathy for the situation, no longer want to pass, make a judgment in reference to following up with the charges we just had the individual identified. But as far as any additional charges and arrests, the obstacle with that is, we don't really label it always as a squeegee incident. It is a crime. So it will go off of the crime. So we may have arrests that were related to, or possibly the derivative of a squeegee incident, but it's going to be an arrest for destruction of property. And we would have to go into the old database- for destruction of property. And we would have to go into the old database to find out in the body of the narrative that it was squeegee-related. And that's how we would, we're having a systems issue with that that has been corrected with our new Axon system.
Okay. And then, right before I go back to Burnett, to bring this all full circle, when these complaints, especially arrests, happen, does this come back to the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success? Do we get involved in any of those instances? And what's usually our action after that?
So this, I want to be clear here. So there's actually a new Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success.
I'm sorry.
And I am not in that role any longer. And MoAAM actually manages the program fully. And I support in my capacity as Deputy Mayor. But we actually meet with BPD at least once a week, and we receive a report from BPD and also from 311 of all of the complaints, excuse me, all of the complaints that come in. And so we are there oftentimes co-responding, responding ahead or behind BPD. So there is a very much collaborative partnership and relationship with BPD and the Mayor's Office of African-American Mail Engagement.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back over to Councilman Burnett. Are you ready?
I think I'm good now. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you just fine.
Okay. Again, my apologies for not being there in person, Mr. Chair and colleagues. So one, I just want to thank Dr. Bunley, Deputy Mayor Leach, and their teams for their approach to this in a more holistic way and trying to address a lot of the root causes that are leading to people engaging in squeegeeing. You know, as I've stated before, that, you know, I view this as a failure on city government to address many of the challenges that our young people, young adults, not all kids out there are facing. And, you know, that holistic approach to trying to really reach them where they are, I think is critically important. And do want to thank the convening as well of a sort of multifaceted group of business owners, community leaders, Squeegee workers, public officials, agency folks, to put our heads together and try to, once and for all, really get to the bottom of why this is occurring and to try and prevent it moving forward. So I'm just thankful for that work. I do want to ask, one of the, in conversation I've had with service, two service providers yesterday that run mentorship programs, and this is for Deputy Mayor Leach and whoever wants to jump in, but one of the issues that was raised in conversation with them was sort of concerns around the expediency of trying to get services for young people and their families. Has there been conversation about creating, you know, fast tracks or things for services for young people who are identified, whether that's, you know, rapid rehousing or food service? You know, the folks that are on the ground working with young people day-to-day are like, you know, when they need things, they need them pretty quickly if we're going to show them that there's going to be a viable alternative. Has there been conversations, inter-agency conversations around trying to fast-track responses for services for young folks that are identified in the network of the African-American Mail Engagements work or other outside partners?
Yep. So, thank you for that question. I think we've all seen challenges in navigating government. And so, you know, that is why we are there, helping our young people navigate government, and we're doing that work alongside our young people. We have identified core partners at some of the key agencies where we know our young people need support, right? So we have the ReEngagement Center that we're working with directly at the school system level. We also have direct relationships with principals and other school leaders whenever we need to connect a young person back to school. So we can pretty much do that work very seamlessly. We've also developed some strong relationships, I would say, with the Office of Vital Records. And so oftentimes, we're not even thinking about them as like a mainstay partner, but our young people don't have IDs. And they need those IDs in order to fill out that W-9, in order to start work. And so, you know, Tracy and Dr. Bunley have been able to cut through that red tape in order to expedite helping to get our young people IDs. Now, you know, again, we talked about being very transparent today, and so there are major challenges with our procurement system, for example, which we are holistically addressing as a city. But, you know, we're talking about having to send agreements through the Board of Estimates, right, which will delay young people being able to start at a work site, because every single work site needs an agreement that has to go through the Board of Estimates, for example. And so I think that there are some internal government processes that we should and can streamline in support of our young people. So, you know, I don't want to make it seem as though that we've, you know, we've cut through all the red tape and we've done the impossible, because we have not. Every day, we are getting better. Every day, we are working harder. And some, every week, we're presented with a new challenge that we have to figure out, right? Last week, it was a challenge around our young people not receiving their paychecks, because oftentimes they are transient. And so the paychecks were being mailed to their homes and, you know, they weren't receiving those paychecks. Or those paychecks were lost because of the postal system. Our young people don't, oftentimes, many of them don't have bank accounts, right? And so we're working with them to get bank accounts. So there are lots of challenges and nuances and a lot of red tape that we are cutting through, but we have absolutely identified core agency partners that we're able to work with through some of these issues. On the housing side, it's a bit more complicated. Many, I've talked about the ages of our young people, right? And so a young person may come and they're 17 or 18 years old and they're like, yeah, I gotta, you know, I need a housing, you know, I need housing. And so we have to do the hard work of digging deeper to figure out what that situation is. Are you, is it that this young person is experiencing homelessness? Or are they having some issues, you know, with their parent, right? And that's the hard work that our staff does, where they engage directly with parents, especially for those young people who are under 18. If young people are under 18, we have to get consent forms signed in order for those young people to engage with us. That means we're going to houses and meeting their parents and connecting directly with parents and working with parents as some of these housing and other issues arise. So, you know, again, we are doing the work of cutting through the red tape, but I think, you know, it's nuanced and we have to approach it with a nuanced approach. And I think there's a lot more work that we can do with our agency partners to expedite the support that we provide young people.
Thank you for that. And that was, in speaking to staff in Monzi and African-American Mail Engagement about some of the young people, you know, just trying to get anecdotes about what they were hearing, that was literally, you know, the response I got was, a lot of young people require, you know, they don't have a license, they may not have, know where their social security card is or birth certificate, and just, you know, may not have somebody in their lives that can, you know, walk through a lot of the things that it takes to get a job. And that's assuming that they're of age to work. Obviously, some of these young people that I've even encountered, as young as eight years old, are not, getting a job is not an option for them. They need other support, other services. And so I just, again, want to thank you all for approaching it in this way, because I do not believe we can solve this challenge without looking at this from a holistic approach and also looking, you know, a better understanding of the complex nature of the challenges and the trauma that our young people are experiencing, our young adults are experiencing in the city of Baltimore every day that lead to what we're seeing on the streets. And so I just want to thank you all for that and for your work. And, you know, I know that if there are issues with red tape, I would hope that, you know, there's actions that the council can take to expedite or alleviate some of those pressure points. We would absolutely like to be a part of that conversation moving forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Burnett. I am going to come back around to Councilwoman Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm going to ask a couple of Councilwoman Porter's questions, if that's all right with you. She's asking, what are the mental health connections partnerships or partnerships that are in need for these young people? We want to ensure that they have added connections for these young people and their families. Have there been any connections through community health worker navigators to ensure that mental health services are provided?
Sure. Thank you for that question. So one of our main partners is a mental health provider, Keys Development. And so we work very closely with Keys Development as we, you know, kind of implement some of our programs. And so Keys, the beautiful thing about the work that they do is it's culturally relevant, right? These are, you know, these are leaders in our city who are from our city and who can connect with our young people in a very real way about mental health, as we all understand and know about the stigma in Black communities in particular around mental health. And so, again, just want to acknowledge that there is a lot of work that is happening in that space and yet and still it's not enough. You know, even through your work around trauma-informed care, our young people are grappling with and dealing with so much trauma. And so a big part of the process is getting them to open up and really talk about, and then start to deal with some of the trauma that they experience. So mental health supports are absolutely a part of our process. The other real challenge that we're seeing is, we're seeing a number of young people present with substance use disorder. And oftentimes, they're presenting with substance use disorder very young. And so, you know, we are doing some work to connect those young people when they are ready to partners that can support them around substance use disorder.
Thank you. Those connections are really critical. And I think that we both, the Councilwoman and I acknowledge and have started to, or will be starting to work on the vast substance abuse crisis we have in our city that, in addition to many other things that we are, you know, dealing with. Her second question was about an intervention manager. I think you mentioned this before with the crisis teams. What are some of the outcomes that the intervention manager and the methodology that can be shared with other agencies and community-based organizations like We Are Us? So I guess what she's talking about here is, given all of the work that you're doing in terms of intervention, can that be something that can be, you know, we've talked about what those are, but can that also be replicated in other situations like gun violence and like going in with organizations such as We Are Us, in addition to the work that's being done?
The, yes, we have to have individuals on the ground who understand the environmental spaces that they're going to on the ground. So, yeah, we are in the process of looking at, my colleague and I work with agencies such as We Are Us, because they do a good job of intervening on the ground. But even with them, we still have to have lead individuals to be able to engage individuals in particular. So there's going to need, we're going to have to do that carefully, but we do have the individuals who are willing to do that, and we'll be able to eventually do that in a scalable way. So, but again, we have to be thoughtful in terms of the individuals that we choose that, again, can go into the spaces where individuals are in any group. Here, we're talking about going to a squeegee corner, but there are other instances, and Director Jackson can attest, where individuals are on the corners that we're trying to engage, and their hustle is totally different. It could be pharmaceutical sales, and you have to have the right people who can go to that space and intervene. And those individuals need all of the services about which we've spoken here during this meeting. So we have to do that carefully and thoughtfully.
Yeah, I think what the Councilwoman is saying here is that, no matter what environment, let's just take those two, because you mentioned it, that the systems should be set up in the same way, in terms of intervening, in terms of the referrals, in terms of the case management. And so I think we just want to hear that that's, there's, I mean, it may not be exactly the same, because, you know, there's other data sharing and privacy issues and all of that, but that if we are intervening in young people's lives in a certain way, shouldn't we be consistent in doing that, even in whatever environment we approach them and meet them where they are?
Yep. And I think you've, we've heard Dr., doctor, excuse me, we've heard Director Jackson and her team talk about the services and supports that they are providing. And so, you know, when they are working to, you know, to reform systems so that we can quickly move, you know, individuals into housing or what have you, that also benefits us, right? And so I want to be clear that the model that we have around our credible mentors and around our outreach workers that intervene on corners where young people squeegee is very similar to the work that's happening at Safe Streets and the work that's happening on the ground in other communities. And so this is that holistic approach that she mentioned in her opening remarks. We, it's not just that we're doing it around violence, we're also doing this work around squeegee, right? And so, you know, I just wanted to acknowledge that there are lots of similarities in the approach and in the work, and to underscore that whenever we're able to change a system, we've changed a system. That means all, you know, individuals that are participating in that system are able to benefit from that system. So if we streamline housing, then that means Dr. Bunley and I can streamline housing for a squeegee worker. And so that is the important work of system change that we are doing in this administration.
Thank you. That's extremely important, and I appreciate that. I'm happy to help on, obviously, the housing front, since I know it best, but however else I can be helpful. I think that's, she's got one more question, but I can ask that on the next round, and I have one more up my head.
Sure. Thank you, Councilwoman. And I don't see anyone with their hands up. Councilman Cohen? Councilman Burnett? All right, we'll move on. And I've got a couple more questions. I want to direct this one to the State's Attorney's Office. Once again, to better understand for the carrot and the stick of this, the stick and how we've been thinking about it. When charges are bought, how, when charges are brought forward, how is the State's Attorney's Office generally proceeding with these cases?
I don't mean to get in the weeds, but what charges? I mean, are you talking specifically about solicitation, aggressive solicitation? Are you talking about a crime that occurred because of the solicitation?
I guess you can probably answer all of those things. I think, first, what are we, what is actually coming down by way of charges? Are we seeing solicitation charges? Probably not, I'm guessing?
That would be correct.
And then, to that effect, for the example that I gave to the Commissioner earlier by which someone pours a bottle of water, a Windex or whatever, on someone's car or hits a windshield, in those cases, as they come down, how are we dealing with those?
So the Baltimore City State's Attorney's Office prosecutes all victim crimes, including malicious destruction of property, as well as an assault against somebody, which would be a victim crime. So if a charge were to come down concerning a victim crime, which I guess it has, I mean, I don't want to talk about any cases, but we would prosecute that. In terms of solicitation or aggressive solicitation under the Baltimore City Code, we have not received any charges concerning those that I am aware of to date. Now, they may be in conjunction with another case, but not standalone.
See. And maybe I won't get into the weeds on that. I understand there's some questions about what we can't even do there constitutionally. So I'll stay out of that in the meantime. I had another question for Deputy Leach and to Dr. Bunley. Either of you can answer this question. But, Dr. Bunley, you gave an example earlier by which we'd been helping a number of young people, and those people were then replaced by new people. I was curious to that effect, you know, given these are networks, these are people that often know each other, they're coming from similar or the same neighborhoods, or they, you know, been on these intersections or corners with each other before. Are we leveraging those networks to provide support services beyond the immediate people that we've helped? And how are we doing that?
Absolutely. Our work considers the peer-to-peer relationships. We are able to get individuals to certain spaces because of the influence of peers, on peers, right? So, yes, yes, we're leveraging those relationships, essentially.
And I guess as sort of a piggyback to that question, we talked a little bit about, Deputy Mayor Leach talked a little bit about- Deputy Mayor Leach talked a little bit about younger kids, seven, 10, who are not eligible to work in the city. These kids should be in school. What kind of work are we doing with our schools? One, to help these young people because they're not showing up to schools, I would imagine that's some sort of early indicator. Are we getting ahead of those things? How so? What services are we offering, and how are we working with our schools?
So, one of the things that we've had to codify, that's the term we use in our office, the work, when we see our youngsters, they fall out and break out into two categories. They're the school-age youth, we call SE, and the non-school-age youth, which we call our NSA. With our NSAs, those are individuals who are basically have in their mind they've quit school, right? But they still want to do something, they're out there squeegeeing, but they've quit school in their mind. And so, again, if they're school age, we always want it, as the first priority, we want to use our re-engagement relationship back to school. But we stay with them. We ride them out to wherever they are. But then, we have our school-age youth, and if we meet them on the corner, and I have to be careful with this because I don't want individuals that, I don't want there to be a mad rush to the corner for the purpose of what we do for them. But we have a process, once we get them, we, as Deputy Mayor stated, there's a FER per form that you have to have to get permission to engage with underage young people, particularly around school. But once we do that, we find them on the corner, and we get the permission from the parent, when we talk to the parent, then we put some of those youngsters in what we call our ABC process. And we have an ABC process for non-school-age youth. But the ABC process that if you attend school, you're not aborting school anymore. In other words, I don't see you doing school hours, you're not on the corner, you're in school, you have a form similar to when many of us were in public schools, we had the conduct slips. You didn't have that, Director Jackson, because you were such a great student. But we have these conduct slips, and it looks at our attendance, their behavior, and their course performance, and they're in school, and they're attending what we have available after school because we, our goal is to get them off the corner. We use that selectively with young people because, again, the resources, which we call for our own children, we call it allowance. Ebony, you might have had allowance, that if you're doing well and doing what you're supposed to do, your parents put a little money in your pocket or somebody if you didn't have to work. Well, we do the same thing with our, a select group of our youngsters as we look at the personal growth plans.
To that effect, do we have tracking mechanisms for where each person is engaging in these various systems? So, for instance, one, I mean, I guess we, I haven't asked this question, but how many, estimating, how many young people are we estimating are on these, at these intersections?
Are where?
How many, how many young people do we estimate are at these intersections? Is it 100? Is it 200?
We've touched, right now actively, we have 117.
Okay.
We know that are active, that we're touching right now.
Got it. And out of those, I guess 117 is the closest possible to the universe that we know.
67 of them are SE. School-age young people.
School-age young people.
Right? And 50 of them are NSA. And the NSA are the individuals in their mind who have decided they've quit school. So, those are the individuals who would come through this process that the Deputy Mayor talked about where we're finding out what it is that they want. First of all, encouraging them to finish school, but if, in fact, they've made up their mind, and they want to work, they want to work, so we find a way to assist them in that once they go through our process.
Got it. And then, for the various needs for these young people, we talked about school, we talked about food, we talked about housing, we talked about mental health, and in some cases, clothing. Do we know of those 117, how many we've offered these services? How, do we keep track of that kind of stuff?
Yeah, we're getting ready to be more granular in terms of tracking those, but yes, we do that work because that's, we do personal growth plans with all of them. In the personal growth plan process, they articulate what their need is. But again, Tracy had to leave, but we're now going to look at, because that's the same question that your colleague asked. Got it. We have to do.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Councilman Cohen. I see he's got his hand up.
Mr. Chair, Glover needs to be elevated.
Thank you.
And I can defer to Councilmember Glover. I don't know that he's had a chance to speak yet.
I'd say go ahead for now, we're still trying to find him, and we'll just keep it moving.
Okay. This is gonna piggyback off of sort of the thread of, or your previous thread. I really think our school system needs to be at the table, both in acknowledging that these are all of our kids, and we all have a shared responsibility for them, and to your point that many of the young people have dropped out of school. And so, I could be wrong, there's a lot of people that have shown up, but Deputy Mayor Leach, is the school system participating in our squeegee collaborative? I don't think I've seen them there, and I think this is an issue where they need to be part of not just the conversation, but the solution.
Yep. So, that's a really good question, and actually, someone raised that with me after yesterday's meeting. So, Dr. Deborah Brooks, the new Executive Director of the Mayor's Office of Children and Family Success, just retired from Baltimore City Public Schools after serving for more than 25 years. So, she just retired, I think, maybe a month ago. And so, she does bring that important school system perspective, but we will ensure that we have someone who is currently working in the school system at the table as a part of those conversations.
No, I appreciate that. Thrilled to have Dr. Brooks on the team. I think she's phenomenal. She has a storied history in city schools. I think she's a great addition to the administration, and I think that it's critical that we have, you know, both North Ave, I mean, administration, and, you know, I know there are many teachers, coaches, and other folks who should be part of this conversation as well because they have direct contact with kids every day, and especially for the children that Dr. Bunley mentioned that have not dropped out yet, you know, that school staff can be a phenomenal mentor or a way to, you know, keep kids engaged.
Yep. We're aligned on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. We're gonna turn it over to Councilman Glover.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, thanks. So, I have some troubles with my phone, and I apologize to my colleagues and also to the agencies for not being able to be there in person. I have more of a statement, and I have more of a encouragement to you guys as opposed to a bunch of questions. And the reason why I said it is because, you know, I was once one of those squeegee kids 40-something years ago, and I think that what I see is the media create a narrative as if these individuals are all bad people, and that's not the case. One of the reasons why I'm here today on this council, and it kind of touched my heart early on when I heard that kid spoke, is because that very same guy that's in front of you today, Dr. Andre Bunley, is like 80% of the reason why I'm here on the city council today, because of an opportunity that was given to me through him. And I think what we see more than anything is that many of our kids are dealing with housing issues, and we're not getting to, like, the ground root of the causes that make many of these individuals go out and squeegee in the first place. Mental health is the biggest portion for the reason why these young folks are on the corners. Some of them are trying to survive because of the fact that, you know, many of their parents aren't here, some aren't cast free, some aren't dead, and they're trying to provide food for their younger siblings at home. Makes me about at home, some of them don't have a home. Some of them are today living on the street. And at times, I ride all through downtown Baltimore, and you see a lot of these young people that are still homeless, laying on the streets of Baltimore City, and it's troubling to me. I am grateful to have a mayor, city council president, and some of my colleagues that are on the city council that are born and raised here to understand what has really been going on in Baltimore City majority of all our lives. We gotta get to the ground root of this. It's gonna take all of us to be able to change the trajectory in which we, these young people are living in today. I think that the mayor, and I give kudos to the mayor for his deputy mayor, for his staff, like Andre Bunley, and those individuals that understand, because we could talk all day long and answer the easiest question of what we're going to do, but the hardest question is how you're going to do it. And what I'm saying is that give this agency an opportunity to change what has been going on in Baltimore for over 40-plus years. It's not gonna happen overnight. It's been two years that they've been in place to help these squeegee kids. And you gotta remember, some of these squeegee kids just don't want the help, and it's hard, it's tough. But in order for us to really focus and change and create the narrative of change, is that we got to not allow the media to dictate to us what is wrong with our children or how we should address the issue. We all know, those of us that are from Baltimore, and many on the council that are here, that have been, they understand as well, we've gotta come together and make sure that we all with the road, me, a deliberate effort, that we all, the agencies, make sure that our young people are protective. This is the only way it's gonna happen. We can't just rely on a deputy mayor, we can't rely on just Monsey, the mayor, we can't rely on just Dr. Bunley. We all have to do our part. Again, I want to say to you guys, continue to keep doing the work that you're doing. I'm here on purpose. I don't give colleagues our help. Again, it's about me and people with.
Councilman, you're breaking up. Councilman, we can't hear you. You're breaking up. Thank you, Councilman Glover. We appreciate you. I am going to turn it back to Councilwoman Ramos. I understand you had another question from Councilwoman Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of them was already answered about the role of the school system, so I appreciate that. I know my other colleagues have the same question. The other is around Deputy Mayor, the performance measures that were outlined in the 2023 budget for MOCFS, I believe, I don't have it in front of me unfortunately, that there were performance measures for the African male, Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement, and wondered if those metrics also correspond with the ones that you all are using now for performance evaluation, or if you're gonna change those metrics in the new budget.
Thank you for that question, Councilwoman Ramos. So, I want to be clear about one thing in particular. So, the Mayor's Office of African-American Male Engagement is under the mayorality. They are not under MOCFS. So, in this year's budget, those two agencies were separated, so the performance indicators for MOAME should not have appeared under MOCFS. And I am not sure, but I do not believe that they are broken out in the budget book specifically for MOAME in this fiscal year, but that is something that we can work on for the upcoming fiscal year.
Yeah, I will look at the budget and have a better question for you there so that we can get that later. And then, I had a question. There, so I have always had positive experiences with the young man on the corner cleaning the windshield. As a matter of fact, one time I did not have cash, and a young person handed me a business card with a QR code that I could use to be able to do my cash app for him, so I did not have to hand him my phone. And that was pretty amazing, right? There's some innovation there that I think we don't, we're not appreciating. And I just wanted to give a shout out to that young person. I thought that was amazing. I think I probably still have it in my bag. And it's that kind of spirit that I think is there, but I also acknowledge, right, that there are people that have had negative experiences, and we touched on it a little bit, but I'm particularly concerned, you know, obviously, we've heard about the cash apps, you know, that people have gotten, you know, large amounts taken out of cash app, and to those people who hand people their phones, don't do that, right? Like, don't hand somebody your phone. The second, you know, thing is, you know, that once a young person is rejected, it's not personal, it's just they don't have the money, and, you know, there could be some frustration there. But then, we've also heard of some other really, you know, bad situations, and of course, the young person with a gun. And we need to acknowledge that. I believe strongly, and I've talked with Commissioner about this, and I've said it publicly, that we, there are lots of guns on the street, and our young people are feeling unprotected by us, so they probably are carrying a gun to protect themselves, right? And that's crazy. And so, I need to understand a little bit more about how we are making sure that our young people, whether they're on the corners or not, are not getting those guns, and that they're feeling that they can get the protection that they need. Because it's not good out there for our young people at all, whether it's economic, whether it's housing, and whether there's just fear for their safety. So, someone could talk a little bit about that, you know. I know that there are people that are coming up to the corners and wondering if the young people have a gun, and that is concerning.
Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you, Councilperson. We've given our officers very specific instructions to make sure that when they are out there, and we have directed them to be out there, to do hourly checks at each one of the locations that we've spoken about. And while some may stay longer at locations than others, the directive is to do hourly checks. They are out there, number one, to make sure that we deter criminal activity in furtherance of the squeegeeing. And when they do commit criminal acts in furtherance, like criminal damage to property or assaults, we are enforcing that. We are giving guidance to make arrests on those cases. We have done that. Also, to be looking for individuals illegally carrying firearms. We have made arrests doing that as well. We made one on the very morning of the shooting incident at Light and Conway. We did it at President in '83. We have done that multiple times. We continue to look for people carrying guns. We want to discourage them from carrying guns because the very individuals who are carrying guns are the very individuals who will use those guns and have those guns used on them. And that's part of the demographic. This is why Monsey is so important, because we want to make sure we can get them on a pathway away from that lifestyle and that bad decision of carrying those guns. So, the officers have instructions to look for that. Yes, we want to protect them as well as protect the motors that are going through those intersections, but we want to discourage them from carrying guns, and we want to enforce against them when we find that they do.
Now, I did want to address the portion of your question that was about the rise in payment app issues. So, I think that's a really important question, and I think we need to spend a moment on that. So, over the past several weeks, the Mayor's Office, MOAME, the Law Department, and the State's Attorney's Office, we've been meeting to address this rise in payment app fraud cases. Our deputy solicitor, Ebony Thompson, has spoken directly with Block, who, they are the who, um, they are the company that owns Cash App. Um, and they are in support of our efforts to be able to reverse transactions, to be able to pull data, um, and close the accounts of individuals that are involved in Cash App theft. Um, so we are working very diligently and working directly with Block on that particular issue. Um, Ebony spoke directly to their counsel. Now, I do wanna take a minute, uh, a minute and a point of privilege here, um, just to really encourage our residents to stay vigilant when it comes to these payment apps. And I'm not just talking about with squeegee workers. I'm talking about with anyone, um, because there are challenges around protections, um, with those apps. And so as a best practice, we are asking folks not to hand your phones to someone that you do not know. Um, additionally, we're also encouraging people to lock your phones, and specifically lock your payment apps with either a PIN or facial recognition technology. Too often, these, uh, these apps are not locked. And so, you know, if we are able to prevent someone from getting into them, then you're able to kinda stop this issue, um, in its tracks. So we know that this is very much a preventable issue, but we are already coordinating between the Law Department, MoAAM, as well as the State's Attorney's Office, and BPD, um, to ensure that we get a handle on, uh, the, the issues around payment apps and Cash App in particular.
Thank you. I appreciate the question, Councilwoman Ramos. I also appreciate your answer. It begs another question for me.
Oh, Mr. Chair, may I just say one thing on that issue? Ebony Thompson, Deputy Solicitor. Um, again, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman Ramos, uh, to, to further that, uh, piggyback on what Deputy Mayor Leach was saying, working directly with Block. They are also issuing, um, a warning, um, in addition to the city of Baltimore, how we're issuing a warning, um, to our residents. They're want to issue a warning to all of their users that we feel that would be more comprehensive on the same things of instituting a two-step verification process. Um, so if someone is either taking your phone if you roll the window down too far, or if you, um, hand them your phone, um, uh, just different, different measures to take to protect you, protect yourself. So, thank you.
Uh, along that line of questioning, uh, for Commissioner Harrison, do we, knowing that we now have this relationship, do we pursue folks who have, um, conducted Cash App theft? Dare we call it that?
Absolutely. When those, when those complaints are filed and reports are taken, working in consultation with, with the deputy mayor, those are active investigations. And when we identify the, the perpetrator who likely has a bank account and who does that, we are absolutely pursuing criminal charges against those individuals.
Thank you.
Yeah, can I ask a follow-up to my question, and I appreciate the, um, dialogue on the Cash App? Um, Commissioner, we have talked about this before, but I'm wondering, and I saw you, you were before Congress the other day, asking for more help for, um, tracing guns, um, into the city. Again, on the gun issue, um, you know, I'm, I'm particularly disturbed that there's guns out there. So even if we're trying to encourage them not to use them, they are there. And so we need to figure out a way, not only to make sure that they're not there, but that they're not giving them to somebody else to use, and more importantly, that we're not getting more guns into the city. And, um, so I wonder if you can talk a little bit about some of the work you're doing to try to bring in more partners to help us with this issue, um, and, um, how to, how to make sure that we're not getting more young people, um, with illegal guns?
Well, thank you. And yes, we did make a strong, uh, argument about guns coming into the city. There are no gun stores in Baltimore. We know half or more come from outside the city, but within the state, the other half come from the other forty-nine states into our city. Uh, we wanna make sure that, number one, um, we have to deter young men from carrying guns, but there are so many guns out there, we actually have more guns than people in the United States. So there's estimated four hundred million-plus guns, and that, those are the ones we know of. Uh, and there are less than, only about three hundred million people. Um, so we have partners, uh, in, in federal partners that are working on this problem daily. Straw purchases where people may purchase guns on behalf of other people who cannot, because they're either underage or they're prohibited, either in the state system or the federal system. We have many of our members from BPD working at ATF and have federal credentials to do that work, so that they can actually go across city and state lines to investigate and arrest people who do it. We have members from our police department working at the US Attorney's Office and our Firearms and Intelligence Unit, who are doing that work to assist in federal cases. And we're trying to not just track the guns in the hands of the shooter to hold the shooter accountable, but where those guns came from, so we can hold others accountable who produced that gun and saw to it that it wound up in the hands of the shooter. All that work has been done by both BPD members, members who are in state government, and federal partners. And we meet and go over that work every single month in my conference room, uh, led by the US Attorney.
Yeah, thank you. I, I think holding the manufacturers accountable is important. Um, I know that there's a few lawsuits here and there. I know the city just filed a lawsuit on the ghost gun issue. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's just so critical to, to make sure that, um, we're trying, we're not getting those guns back in. So I, I appreciate the, the detail. Thank you.
And one, one more, one more thing. We, we did talk about the, not just the insurgents, but, uh, the growing demand for the ghost guns or privately-made firearms, which have increased exponentially more than the traditional guns that you can buy from a store. So we're seeing more and more of those ghost guns hit the streets of Baltimore. They've been in the hands of people as young as thirteen years old. Purchase them with a credit card. They can be delivered anywhere, and they cannot be traced. It's an increasing problem for us, making the crime fight harder. But it's happening everywhere, but it's exponentially high here, and we're, it's something we're focused on as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Ramos. Um, I actually, uh, my, my next question is more of an opportunity I wanna extend to, uh, to Ebony Thompson, to, to talk a little bit about, uh, the city code and legally the ups and downs of where we interact with the city code on this issue. Can you give us some insight, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, Ebony Thompson, Deputy Solicitor. Um, the Law Department, um, has been reviewing, uh, the relevant case law. Uh, and we believe that panhandling and solicitation are First Amendment-protected activities. And what that means is that any limitations on that activity is gonna be subject to judicial scrutiny. And what that looks like is any enforcement strategy that we implement with the city, it has to strike a balance between the legitimate governmental interest and public safety with the constitutional rights of the workers. So when we take the legal lease out of that and we look at it, we are acknowledging public safety is a very important concern. It is a very important interest. However, the First Amendment rights are very important as well. And you can only infringe on those rights to the, to the level and the limit that is required to secure and, and, and prevail and uphold the public, um, interest, um, and safety. Now, I wanna highlight that the mayor's strategy and what, uh, this administration is implementing by using the collaborative effort is meeting that test. That's what's allowing us to meet that test and why it's so critical and it's so important, and why the Law Department has been, um, at both of the, the, the first meetings for that. Because what is allowing people to do is bring the business, uh, downtown community, um, in the room, um, bring the community at large, bring the nonprofits, bring the squeegee kids, squeegee workers themselves in the room. And not only are we talking about intervention, but we're talking about enforcement. So if we are narrowly tailoring our solution and our strategy to that legitimate public interest and safety, we will meet that test and we will uphold, um, any, any scrutiny or any constitutional challenge and be able to defeat that, because we believe that's important for the city as protecting the city with the Law Department. So that's where we stand on that, sir.
Excellent. Thank you. That helps a ton, I think, to, at least for me, because I didn't know any of that, uh, to sort of set the, uh, the stage for what, what we are able to do. And, um, yeah, I just really appreciate that. Thank you. Um, the, I have a number, I, I could go on for days with questions, and I, I'll, I'll spare you that. Um, there are maybe two more things I wanna ask. One is gonna be a request from the committee, uh, and that would be to provide an aggregated report of all the metrics that you guys are tracking. Uh, this is for, um, you know, our interactions with squeegee kids and so on and so forth. Uh, I think it's been really helpful for me to understand that this is a universe of a hundred and, roughly a hundred and seventeen young people. Um, we, we know what that universe is. It changes, but I'm sure when, it's not gonna be two hundred people tomorrow. Um, and understanding where they interact with us and, and where we fail to meet their, their needs to get them off of these intersections is gonna be really helpful for, I think, us as the council to figure out what we can do, if there's anything we can do. So, uh, that would be really helpful. Uh, my, uh, my, my, my last question is, and I think we kinda danced around this. We talked about schools and how we, we work with and engage with schools. Um, uh, being that these are young people who are typically still in our school system, um, also, these are people, all of them have families. Um, and I'm, I'm really curious at what point, you know, of course, we're engaging with parents, but then extended family as well, uh, to figure out where there are gaps and what they're able to, uh, provide them and, and how we can leverage those family relationships to meet those needs. But, um, i-if there's any insight on that, that would be helpful as well. The question, the, the crux of the question is, how are we engaging families? Essentially, these young people's supposed support services that should exist, but maybe aren't meeting, meeting their needs in the moment.
We get to families through young people, and we get to young people through our quality-connected relationships. When we get through those quality-connected relationships, that is the discourse between the young person and the staff, you get that there is no family. Or there's no perceived support from family, right? Um, but whenever there is, or, or there is a, they articulate that family exists, but there is no real connection. So any guidance that we give, we give it always in some wholesome way, unless we hear real rejection of that idea through the young person. So, um, we have a lot of disconnection. We have a lot of trauma in our city. And so that's why it's important that we talk about language of what success is, all of those things, because family becomes sometimes the individuals who are just working, that events care, right? From the perspective of the youngsters with whom you dealing. So, um, we get to family when the family is involved. We have thirty youngsters up at Copton, and the ones who families are involved, you see it. I mean, they are dropping them off in the morning and picking them up, if that is the case. And, and in the other instances where individuals are catching the bus, et cetera. So it varies, but we get basically to family through our young people. And the only way you can do that is to build the relationship, and then they'll begin to tell you all of the things that they're going through. I mean, Davion just didn't tell me those things until we had a quality connection, and I was able to center with him about my circumstances. And then he began to share it, because he was just angry. He was a youngster that was in, on the verge of graduating, could graduate, but was totally way off the path for graduation. We brought him back to the path. He graduated Mirabeau High School, right? And was working, but he was way off, um, because he had entanglements with the law. And we are still working with him through that right now. So in his mind, just that commitment is that we're family. So it, it, it varies, but we always do family through young people for the most part, because we meet most of our young people on the corners. And then through our relationship, we're able to kinda see what kinda support they have.
Yeah, I appreciate that. That, thank you. And I think, you know, as we think about, we talk about the deep-seated issues that lead folks to end up on these corners. A lot of it, young people coming from broken or damaged homes. And, um, sometimes those, those homes aren't irreparable, um, but sometimes it's a matter of figuring out what those, those, those homes need as well. Um, sometimes it's housing. Sometimes it's a little money. Sometimes it's food. But, um, oftentimes, it leads to our young people out here squeegeeing. And so, um, I, I don't think I have any other questions, any additional questions from the committee? Councilwoman Ramos, Burnett, Cohen, Costello? Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Uh, we're gonna open up for public testimony. Um, for those that are gonna be in person, we're gonna have you line up to the podium. Uh, for those that are online, uh, please use the raise hand function, and we'll acknowledge you. We'll start first with the folks who are here in person and, uh, can testify personally. As you walk up to the podium, uh, please make sure to introduce yourself, your name for the record. Um, speak clearly into the microphone, and you can, feel free to take down your mask in order to talk.
How are y'all?
Uh, can you speak into the microphone, just so we can get you?
I came today to help out.
And, and quickly, I just wanna note, uh, there's a two-minute time limit. Um, I'll begin timing once you've introduced yourself. Please, go ahead.
I know that everybody here has a solution to the problem, and so do I. I have been at the Baltimore Inner Harbor for almost thirty years as a shop owner. I came there when Ralph owned it. GGP took over. And then now we have Oxianni from New York. He put everybody out, okay? He put five guys that was making fifty thousand dollars a year. He put in, out, heads at the bell free. He put out everybody, and he wouldn't accept my rent. He said he was going to renovate the Inner Harbor and make it beautiful. And everybody would come back in time for the baseball season. But it's been three years, and nobody has come back. He took the money from the city and skipped town, okay? I would like all of us to go to the gallery today and have lunch and go shopping and just have a good time. But we don't have a gallery because the ten-year-old kids, fifteen-year-old kids, closed down. The management, our security, and our police department didn't work together to save the gallery. We don't have it anymore. We're not having Harbor Place no more. I'm going to ask the Commissioner and the Police Department. We're on the red brick. I'm still there. I've been, uh, voted into an outdoor entertainer for many years. I'm gonna ask the Police Department, please, the red brick that is behind the Inner Harbor, the Cheesecake Factory, they are riding bicycles. They put the bicycles way up, and they hit the tourists in the head, and they sent them to the hospital.
Ma'am, can you, uh, conclude soon? You've gone over your two minutes.
I have a little hearing in pair.
Okay.
I'm a senior citizen, and I apologize for that. I don't hear you.
Uh, you've surpassed the two minutes. If you could work towards your conclusion of your testimony.
I don't hear you, sir.
Um, time.
Oh.
Two minutes.
Okay. And we have a bicycle lane in front of the harbor that the mayor put there. It's great. But they have made the red brick behind the Cheesecake Factory a bicycle lane. There's no bicycle riding after ten AM. They're hitting our tourists, our baby strollers, everybody, and they mean to hit them. I'm gonna ask the Police Department to enforce it. No bicycle riding on the red brick behind the Cheesecake Factory, all the way down to the Rusty Scopper. They're putting everybody in the hospital. They're knocking them down, and the Police Department told me that. I have, I have witnessed all of the crime, okay? And I do have a crystal ball because I have hindsight. And I do have a crystal ball because I have hindsight. We could stop the crime today. Are they going to storm this building? Yes, they are, like they did in Washington. We need to bring in the Coast Guard, we need to bring in the National Guard like you did the last time, and they came to the harbor and they protected us for over a week. Nothing happened because we had Big Brother. We need Big Brother, the National Guard, the FBI, Coast Guard, the mayor needs a backup. Protection for him not to be hurt and for us not to be hurt here in our beautiful city. We need backup. We, I go through this, when I go down the harbor east, I go try to buy my food at Whole Foods, I can't, they hit my car, they want to break my windshield, they do everything to me. I go to John Hopkins three times a week to dial this, I can't cross the bridge, okay? They sprayed the chemicals in my eye, I can't see, I got police report. We're all suffering, okay? It's elderly abuse, it's bad, but we're all going through it, okay? We can't walk, we can't drive, okay? If you'll have a committee, I'd like to volunteer, I'd like to help, I'm powerful, okay? I want to help. We got a bad problem. They're shooting people in front of our eyes. We need a Big Brother, we need something. We need, we need to protect this building so it doesn't get stormed, we need our city not to be broken up, okay? But everything we got, we're losing it. There's people that are buying $3 million condos here on King Highway.
Ma'am, if you could work towards concluding your testimony, we'd really appreciate it so that everyone else can testify as well. If you could just begin to close, that'd be really appreciated.
I volunteer, I'll help with anything.
Okay.
We're in a crisis. We...
Ma'am, it's time, it's time, and...
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And we'll make sure to get your information if there's...
Could get the bikes off the red brick. It's one, one crime that we could solve today.
Thank you, ma'am.
Always a pleasure, counsel, here and there and afar. I'm going to speak as a community leader, an activist, and an advocate, all of the above. And one thing that you said, Dr. Bulley, that makes a lot of sense, you know, this is our city, not just the mayor's. And we should be very proactive in our partners. I'm really concerned when you, when we say housing partners, who are these partners? Because I know of a lot of homeless youth that's laying around downtown. When I do outreach, I know they're there, I know a lot of their locations, even in vacant and abandoned houses. And I'm really concerned to know housing partners and how we are engaging our homeless youth. When it comes to the corners, you know, everybody have different experiences. I always feel like, look, I'm proactive, I pull my money out before I get there, you know, because I don't even want the problem. But it's good to engage, but being able to engage and collectively allow partners to work together with all the resources. The funding is very important, because like you say, you have to subsidize situations. Well, we house a lot of individuals, a lot, and subsidy is a big word for us. I know the partnership that we have with Roka, Roka deals with a lot of youth, a lot of homeless youth running into problems. I haven't heard their name, mention the date, but I will shout them out because they stay on my phone, and some of my other partners. So I think when we're looking at partners, let's say effective partners, and the type of partners that want to end not only what's happening with our children, but with our homeless youth as well. And I think that's real important, that we have an open discussion about that. And Commissioner Harrison, we need the hot team back. We need to have individuals to engage individuals with certain specific needs. And, you know, I love your officers, officers, I love all of them, but let's put the resources in place like a buffer to protect some of us out here on the street all the time, okay? I love you guys. Be blessed.
Thank you so much. Please proceed, state your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My first name is Luton. My second name is Abula, and my surname is Thornton. Today, humbly, I first want to thank everybody for all the efforts that they've made. What I'd like to do at this time is broaden out some of the other spokes that are in this larger wheel that need perhaps to be taken into consideration so that we can make further headway on getting to the bottom of the problem and actually solving the entirety of the problem. So first, there are already some laws that are in existence. When enforced, I could assist with the problem. The problem that, or the climatic event that brought this particular event in this building was a father and a husband had his life taken away as the result of a firearm being discharged. So firearms, in terms of, it's somewhere between a trickle-down practicality of how they're being discharged and how young people are gaining access to them are being taken to entirely new levels. Levels beyond simply being shipped in from out-of-state lines and being constructed privately. And I hope that those levels are being brought further to the forefront and for discovery. I think that it would probably be best, for the sake of time, just to simply leave off theories and conspiracy theories about, you know, I was watching the video with the lawyer representing the young man, and I, you know, when I hear the undertones of, you know, the revolution without being televised and those sorts of things, we want to leave those off. This isn't a racial situation, okay? This is all people. The way the city of Baltimore, and this is key, the way the city of Baltimore is situated, it's one of the largest cities next to Washington, D.C. It has multiple entry points. People come to Baltimore for a number of reasons, and they have to use those major arteries. And within the past several years, when those major arteries are utilized, one of the first interfaces that people of all walks of life come to have to confront are individuals walking around, they could be homeless, they could be squeegee carriers. So it's not just about race, and it's not just about squeegees, and it's not just about the small firearms, because all of those things at some point are probably just going to become obsolescent. And the construct of Baltimore City changes.
Thank you, sir. If you could conclude, that would be helpful.
Okay. So one last solution that I have written down, and I'm sure that they're many, is that the idea of just having the individuals that do the squeegees, if they're not private solicitors, have a landed of some kind, some kind of check-in process, maybe like if you go into a, an event like here, or if you're checking into a fair, you get some kind of band with your name written on it, okay? In that way, there's a system of reporting, and there's a system of keeping accountability of who individuals are. We shouldn't have to hunt for individuals if something goes awry. So I believe that's enough. As a matter of fact, if any of you gentlemen want to see the rest of us on this paper, I'm available to you. Thank you.
Thank you. And before you begin, I just want to note for folks that are joining us virtually, if you'd like to testify, please use the raise hand function, and we'll acknowledge you after this last piece of testimony. And for those that are joining us by phone and can't raise their hand, we'll go number by number to check to see if you are here to testify. With that out, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Dolores Wright, and I'd like to start by just thanking you all. Just to hear the advocacy is just so, so important. Thank you so very much. I'm just, I'd say, but for the grace of God, there go I, you know? Our children are in just a terrible, terrible state. I'm with the company, and I'm going to just put this plug out, because I think the company is just perfect for what's happening now with youth who are 18 and over. And many of you have heard of Prepaid Legal, you've heard of Legal Shield. The name has changed to Prepaid Legal Services Incorporated, and they are looking for entrepreneurs. They're looking for young folk, they don't ask you for a resume. If you're 18 and over, and you're a good person, and you want to earn some money, this is the company that you want to be affiliated with. The services, we have lawyers throughout the country, let me say quickly, it's throughout the United States and Canada. Families purchase a legal plan, and their children are covered up to age 26 if they're living at home or away at college. While my grandchildren were in other states in college, my daughter had the service, one grandson got into an issue, they called the attorney that was in Massachusetts, because again, it's throughout the country and in Canada. I'm going to leave some information. I want you to think about entrepreneurship in, just at another level, where these young guys could move from squeegeeing, if that's such a word, to true entrepreneurship. It's, the company's been around for 50 years, and I love it. I love it, I've been doing it since I retired, and I'm going to leave some information with you. Kids, our children need help, so hopefully this will help.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
All right, and we're going to move on to testimony from folks that have their hands raised on the WebEx, starting with, starting with Jay. Yep, we can hear you. You have two minutes.
So I appreciate all the work everyone's been doing. My question is really simple. What's being done to restore law and order on the corners immediately? You know, being a victim of a squeegee incident myself, that was, you know, was on Conway and Light Street about a year ago, I contacted the police, who did nothing. I had a conversation personally with the councilman Eric and the police commissioner, and, you know, we kind of came to an agreement that, you know, there were programs that were ongoing, and they were working. And I had two options at the time. I said, you know, I said to them, you know, what would you have me do? I can, I can report this as a crime, I can go down to the, you know, town hall or whatever it is and report it as a crime, and, you know, the perpetrators would have my personal information. And I have, you know, a family to think about, and so it didn't really leave me any option but to agree with them and say, okay, let's, let's see how the next year goes. And unfortunately, a year's gone by, and things haven't improved. You know, as a, as a local business owner and, you know, someone that frequents the city, it doesn't make me want, it's not, not something that makes me want to come into the city on a regular basis. I, you know, I, like other motorists, will tell you, they avoid certain corners deliberately so that they don't have a possible altercation. So to wrap it up, I really just want to know what's being done immediately to protect the motorists. I see, you know, I hear about a lot of things about the squeegee kids and underprivileged, and I definitely respect that, but the motorists are the ones who are suffering, the business owners are the ones who are suffering on a daily basis.
Thank you, Jay. Unfortunately, we don't, this is a time to testify, and so we don't field questions, but I think your, your point is well noted, and something that the department is very aware of so far as meeting those needs. I'm going to, I'm going to go to you right now. We have one other person in person before we go back to the folks who are joining us virtually. Ms. Trueheart?
Okay.
Please.
My name is Kim Trueheart. I live in the 8th District. I'm glad to see all of you here. Unfortunately, I didn't hear anything new from the administration, and this is a subject that is near and dear to me. I ran a program for the squeegee kids several years ago. I had variant outcomes because their needs are so specific that you can't do a program on the cheap, and that's what the city does. It treats our children as though they're afterthought, and that's not good. And I'm here to say that we need stronger programs that support the children. It starts in the home. They're not in the homes, they're basically living on the community. You can call it living on the streets, but it's the community. Surf couching. Housing is a big issue of young people. I've heard nothing about the Department of Housing. Why aren't they here? They need to be here. They need to identify a certain number of vouchers that we can get these young people. And whatever the rules are, I think you said earlier that the rules go out the window when we're trying to do this. So I'm going to hold you to that, in that we need exceptional leadership on this matter. We have a large police presence here today, that scares me. I don't know why. Because most squeegee folks are not breaking the law, and you can say that there's a law not to be in the intersections, yeah, I get that. But these kids are trying to make a living, and we need to make exceptions for them. There was a young man here earlier, well, he's not that young, but he's an ex-NFL football player, and he proposed to me today, uh, idea. And he says he wants to do everything he can to legitimize what they do. He says, give them licenses, set goals, set a bar for them to obtain a license. That's a good idea. Now, what we have to do to make it a legitimate business, I don't think nobody is addressing it. I think we've, we've looked everywhere but, and sure, it's difficult to take a 13-year-old or 12-year-old or 10-year-old and put them up as a legitimate business owner, but we may have to do that. So I think it's worth considering. In my program, what I found was, these kids were so needy. It started with basic official documents, identification cards, birth certificate. That takes a lot of effort. Even today, one of the squeegee, we took him to GI Medical. Today, they still call me to set up his appointment. It's, it's, it's really criminal when you think about it. This child is on the street. Where the parents are, I don't know, but... But, you know, why is a sixty-five year old woman having to be responsible for a thirteen year? Not good. We need to help these kids in a very different way. And everybody talked about doing traditional things. They don't, they do need traditional help. But a lot of it is out of the box, out of the ordinary. And you cannot solve those problems with traditional means. I'm sorry, but I get emotional about this and it's hard for me to talk anyway. And my stroke has affected me, but my point is, let's really, truly think out of the box to solve some of these problems. Because you can't lock your way out of the problem arresting people. It's not gonna work 'cause these kids are too young to be in jail. They need to be given a chance to live. And whatever we have to do, we need to do it. And the first thing is, what is the budget? Set aside to help squeegee kids. I haven't heard that addressed. Did it get talked about? I want the, the local control bill signing because that's important to me too. You know, we're gonna abolish the police department. Did I say that? Yeah, abolish the police department and take their money. And put it to the squeegee kids, but that's another subject.
I gave you more than two minutes.
Yes, you did. I always get more than two minutes.
I appreciate you.
Mr. Leach, I was told to introduce myself to you. Here's my card. Yes, but we need to talk.
Thank you, Ms. Trueheart. Appreciate you. We're, we're gonna go back to folks joining us virtually in WebEx. Next, we have up Kim Lane. Uh, we have ML.
Yeah, good afternoon. Uh, thank you, Mr. Conway, Mr. Kirman. Uh, I live in Charles Village on St. Paul, so I regularly come in contact with the squeegee workers at St. Paul and North. And, uh, let me just also say, um, a transplant to Baltimore, I moved here two years ago. I didn't know what a squeegee worker was until I moved here and I've had dozens upon dozens of interactions with squeegee workers. I try to keep singles in the car because I know I'm gonna be encountering them when I'm driving. And overwhelmingly, they have all been where it was, I'm sorry?
We lost you for a second. Can you repeat yourself? You said overwhelmingly, they have been?
I, I, yes, I apologize. Uh, I was just simply saying, overall, my interactions with the squeegee workers have been positive. I can only name one time where it was an unpleasant experience. Uh, I've had, on occasion, for the squeegee workers to give me the, uh, business cards with their cash app information, which I thought was very helpful because it helped to keep traffic moving. But I do have to say, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out how disturbing the premise of this meeting is. I, I find it very disturbing that you have an angry, violent, white man wielding a dangerous weapon, attacking black youth, and then that person is shot and killed in what I believe is self-defense. And the media and, and everybody is in an uproar and the narrative is, oh, these kids are so violent and they're attacking people. And so what I haven't heard here today or this afternoon is, you know, we're talking about how we wanna tell people to stay in the cars and, and don't give your phones to people. Well, let's come up with a, a message around, don't get out of your car with a bat and attack people. Because that's not helpful either. You know, that's violent behavior. And, you know, if you listen to some folks, you think that, you know, the squeegee people out here murdering folks and killing people every day. When, when actuality, you have a violent white man with a dangerous weapon attacking black youth. And so to me, that's just as big of a problem as a kid with a squeegee on the corner.
Sir, you've reached your two minutes. Can you please conclude your testimony?
Sure, that's it. I just wanna thank you guys for, uh, you know, addressing the issue and for everyone who's genuinely working to come up with a solution. And, um, you know, I would just say, let's not demonize the squeegee workers. Let's, you know, be genuine about it, but also let's come up with, you know, some standards to maybe lessen the aggression on all sides. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I, um, I, I wanna address something. I think we've been very careful in this meeting not to make this meeting about that one incident. I think this is an issue that is certainly much larger than that one incident. That said, I think the approaches that we've been discussing here today have been far more nuanced than enforcing or otherwise. And I, I wanna thank folks thus far for being very reasonable in their approach in that regard and, you know, appreciate the insight thus far from, from testimony. We have someone here who wants to testify. Please.
Originally, I was just going to sit and view and listen 'cause I'm told that I can talk a lot, but I wanted to
All right, I'm gonna put two minutes on it.
Listen.
Just so you
But it is the last, um, person's comment.
Your name for the record.
I apologize. I should know better. My name is Nicole Hanson Mundell. I am the executive director of Out for Justice. Out for Justice is a grassroots group led by formerly and currently incarcerated people. And our goal is to change laws and policies that impact formerly and currently incarcerated people. And so, when I heard about this hearing today, I thought the premise of this hearing was to address the issues that happened. So thank you for clarifying that, 'cause I echo many of the statements of the last commenter about, where's the empathy for our black boy? Right? We, we hear a lot of empathy for, um, you know, a gentleman that decided to take some actions in his own hands and the empathy for that gentleman, but less empathy for the young man who was trying to make a living that day. And I, and I agree with the statements of Ms. Trueheart. As radical as they may sound, we need out-of-the-box ideas. The traditional ways we've been doing business has been getting us back to this point where we're talking and talking and talking. And I agree that we need to know what the budget is, right? What is the budget as a release to squeegee, our squeegee boys, you know? Could we allow more younger kids to have access to the squeegee program? You know, if a mother, if there's a young twelve-year-old who's out there squeegeeing, could he be eligible, she be eligible for that program? How could multi-agencies work together to figure out housing and social supports? And surely we understand, when you're dealing with young people, the, the situation is very complicated because the parent is involved and these folks are involved. But I will, I will, what I do know is many of our young people are under the god, the, the state is their parent. And so, what happens when you find out that the young people who are out, um, living on community, as Ms. Trueheart says, uh, we find out that the state is the parent? At, you know, at what point do we hold the state accountable? Because oftentimes we'll see that those young people are in foster care or have left the foster care home. And I agree, and I'll, I'll close out on the idea of bringing in the Department of Housing here, the city's Department of Housing, because that's a crucial department that is responsible at this point for navigating buildings and making sure that, you know, they run a building where I am, the Isle of the Community Center, grossly underutilized building where infrastructure dollars could support the upstairs of housing our young people. Funding could be supported to Baltimore Safe Haven, which is an org that houses young LGBTQ, uh, youth. Why are, you know, they should, they should not have problems accessing funding in, in other groups who house and support young people. So, I think it's a multi-agency approach. It, it should be an out-of-the-box approach. We should not be afraid to do some things that we have not traditionally done. And if that means opening up city-owned buildings and investing dollars in city-owned infrastructures, not, not selling them to someone because the city doesn't wanna manage them, but the city using whatever federal dollars we have to invest in infrastructures that the city owns and hire people to manage these buildings to be able to house our young people, even if it's a day center, you know? Something has to happen to get the babies off the streets.
Thank you.
And to be supported. So, out-of-the-box ideas. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Uh, next up, we've got T. Sims. We're gonna unmute you right now. You're muted.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep. You've got two minutes.
All right. How you, how you doing? My name is Terry Sims. And I just pretty much, much wanna offer a couple of solutions. We hear all the time about what the problem is here in Baltimore, but not enough people are actually offering solutions. And I like what the young lady said, uh, just now, thinking outside the box. 'Cause I have an out-of-the-box idea. Now, um, it, it has to do with the policing in Baltimore and the school system, all right? First, I believe we need to step into 2022 and start using the tech and technology that we have available in 2022 to do the policing. We have, uh, rain cameras. I think the city should start a program to give every resident in Baltimore a rain camera. And every business in Baltimore, some type of rain camera, type of, type of device, to where as though we can build up a, a surveillance grid around the city, to where as though anytime somebody commits a murder in Baltimore, it'll be easier for us to identify these individuals because they'll be, they'll be probably caught on camera. You see what I'm saying? And, um, the prosecutors will have an easier case to be able to get a conviction because it will be on tape. Also, with, um, that's just, just one part of it. Of course, it will be gaps in the surveillance because of the vacant homes and everything, but once we build up the, the grid, we can figure out where the holes are and then we can plug the holes. Also, with the school system, I believe we should put trades back into the school. I believe ninth grade year, all students should come, uh, be able to come to school and learn about all trades, including cybersecurity, robotics, all the new, new age trades, not just carpentry, not just plumbing. I believe they should learn all different type of trades their ninth grade year. And then at the end of their ninth grade year, they should be able to choose what trade they wanna learn. Tenth grade year comes, they start learning on that specific trade that they chose. Tenth grade summer comes, we put them into these vacant homes and start them, start having them learn their trade on a, on a paid training program. This keeps the kids off the streets and, um, keeps them busy doing, uh, doing something other than being out here selling drugs or even squeegee. You see what I'm saying? Eleventh grade year, we do pretty much the same thing. Twelfth grade year comes, we, we have our kids actually graduate with a certification and a certified trade. And now our kids now have the power to go anywhere in the United States or anywhere on this planet for that matter, and actually be able to get a job and, and take care of a family.
Mr. Sims, if you could conclude your testimony, it'd be appreciated. If you could begin to wrap up, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
Oh, I'm, I'm pretty much done. I was, I was just wrapping up right, uh, right then and there with the, uh, with the twelfth grade thing. I, I'm, I'm just offering a solution. I know it's gonna cost a lot of money, but my thing is, once we come up with a plan, we can find a way to pay for it after we get the plan. And I'm done. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, Mr. Sims. Uh, next up, we've got Kim Lane.
Hi, thanks for, um, taking my question and comment. So, I work in, uh, Pitt Town near Washington Village, sorry, Washington Boulevard and MLK. And, um, I mean, last summer and beginning into this summer, it was our local youth who were squeegeeing. We had a great relationship with them. DPW got them a trash can. They kept the intersection clean. Local businesses hired them. So, I'm just using that as an example because how do we connect with Dr. Bunley and other programs? I mean, it's, it's the, it's the folks, like Ms. Trueheart said, we're in the neighborhood. We know our local young people. We even know how to connect them to, uh, resources. But if we had things like grant funds where we could supplement squeegeeing, maybe with helping seniors, other work, you know the gamut. In the neighborhoods, that would help us to either get them more quickly engaged because we have their trust with Dr. Bunley's office or other programming. I mean, I'm just, I haven't seen a way how organizations like ours have, can engage in this solution. And also, I'm just, um, maybe they could get back to other folks like me who have this question. There did seem to be a shift, um, uh, probably like six, eight weeks ago where older squeegee workers kinda took over many intersections. I mean, we've been talking about it along MLK, Sinclair and Moravia, and like our local kids, our local young people were kicked off their intersections. I'm just wondering if there was, if anybody knows why that happened? And then we also saw police calls at MLK and Washington Boulevard and Crete, whereas we hadn't had them before with our local younger people.
Thank you, Kim. Unfortunately, once again, we don't, uh, take questions. This is an opportunity for testimony, but I will offer the opportunity for, uh, Dr. Bunley or Deputy Mayor Leach to offer some sort of connection if, um, partners like your organization would like to reach out and work with the mayor's office on this issue. Is there a contact information, Dr. Bunley, that we wanna share?
Absolutely. Um, in term, we, we always accept support of individuals who want to get young people connected based on the infrastructure that we presently have to connect young people. Again, I talked about earlier, we're in the process of really expanding the network of people being involved. But I would just like to give the caller my, um, work phone number and then I'll get you connected. We could talk a little more, I or one of individuals on my staff, about how we can get you connected specifically if you see a young person that's seemingly disconnected and we can help. So, I'll give you the number now. And that number is four, four, three, three, eight, eight, six, eight, six, four. Again, that's four, four, three, three, eight, eight, six, eight, six, four. And when you call me, uh, send a text as well to give me some context about this conversation and then I'll get you locked in. Put your name, your, your name and, um, and I'll lock you in and then we'll, we'll, you'll get a call, one hundred percent.
And the other thing I wanted to add, I mentioned during my testimony, but we're gonna be, um, out on corners hosting what we call Resources to the Corners, or these pop-up resource fairs, every Wednesday over the next, um, over the next month. So today, we were out at President and Lombard. Next week, we will be at Mount Royal and , uh, North Avenue, right at, uh, I-83. The following Wednesday, we'll be back on President and Lombard and then we'll go back to I-83. So, those events usually happen between eleven AM and either two to three PM. And so, any constituent, um, employer, partner, nonprofit can actually pop up and do engagement with us on the corners.
Thank you. Next up to testify, we have Dr. Stephen Sutherland.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You've got two minutes.
Okay, excellent. So, um, I have a program. I'm a new not-for-profit in Baltimore. It's called Guardians of Greatness. I offer the young people, um, a lot of excellent activities such as, um, flight instruction, okay, where they can go and earn their private pilot's license, unmanned drone instruction, and some, um, some activities with trades and recreational activities. And at my program, it, it might sound like an excellent program. I think that everything that everyone else has mentioned is quite excellent. I was very impressed with, uh, what T. Mims, um, said, et cetera. However, um, I wanna point out that everybody in the community has the, the wisdom of how to raise and guide our kids. The issue in the community is not a lack of not-for-profits and programs and, and, and The issue in the community is not a lack of not-for-profits and programs and, and diligent people. The issue is the willingness to give billions of dollars in economic subsidies to corporations, right? And, and, and we find ourselves starving for resources in the community, okay? People have told me personally that they will not help, other not-for-profits have told me that they will not help me with my effort to engage the young people because they are afraid that I will take grant money from them. So we have a community here where you have a lot of people who are competing for what they believe to be scarce resources. So I believe that the resources are being kept scarce and it causes us to fight among each other and have all these, this chaos with these epidemic statistics, okay? I just wanna point out, let's be really serious about what, you know, what we're funding. Are we gonna fund the community or are we gonna fund the rich corporations? Okay, that's my point, that's it.
Thank you, Dr. Sutherland. Right in, right on time for the two minutes, I always appreciate that. Next up, we've got Lisa Nugent. Gwen Nugent. Sorry if I butchered your name, Lisa.
Hello, this is Lisa. Yes, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. You've got two minutes.
Thank you, this is Lisa Nguyen. Thank you so much for hosting this session, I really appreciate it. I just wanna share my own testimony in terms of the intersections and it's a huge source of frustration, fear, and it really impacts the quality of my life as a citizen and living in the city for fifteen years. I'm sure others feel the same sentiment as well. And I understand it's multifaceted and there's a lot of factors at play. But it's also, to me, a matter of personal property. They spray my car without asking, they spray even when I ask them to not do it. You know, I'm really scared to drive around the city and to enjoy some of the businesses and restaurants. And I actually go out of my way or take the tunnel to avoid going in those directions. As someone who is invested in the city, I wanna attract additional young professionals, traveling professionals. I work with the hospital communities and we have residents and fellows that come in. They're here for a handful of years and they have a choice to stay. We have a lot of traveling nurses that I've hosted and they've been offered to renew their contracts and they don't want to stay. And I think when we look at our tax base and trying to increase the population, families are moving out. This is something that even in my business, trying to have my company host meetings and events here to enjoy our restaurant and to the amenities, to do hotel stays for multiple nights, they choose not to come. Or they do it for one day and they're like, they don't come again. And I think that's disheartening because I want our city to flourish. I wanna see Baltimore do well. But I also know for me, I'm not comfortable with the workers on the street corners because I think there's a lack of respect that I feel. I'm okay if they walk around, but they still touch my car even when I ask them not to. I do believe that I would like to see more resources because I believe that these boys would rather have a job that's safe for them. And if we can find ways to create trades, schools and courses for them to maybe build homes, they can make more affordable homes, get them into landscaping. Many of our medians are not mode. There's a lot of job opportunities if we can direct them into safe activities for them. I think they would welcome that. Or finding other ways of rec centers, recreational sports, reusing our school properties after hours to allow them to have a safe place for them to be kids. I recognize I don't know what it's like to be in their shoes. I hear a lot of the testimonies and I try to empathize. But I do know that we all wanna be safe and we all wanna make a living. And so I encourage us to continue finding ways that we can still encourage the professional and the businesses and the development as well as the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. I, I think you've very delicately touched on the edges of all this. It's, it is multifaceted. We have one call in. Uh, we're gonna unmute you and if you'd like to testify, please let us know. If not, just say no. You can try to unmute yourself. This is the person with a number ending in seven, two.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so very much. I greatly appreciate this meeting. And I wanted to echo the comments made by Jay and Lisa online.
Can you state your name for the record, please?
Oh, greatly, yes, thank you. I'm Kate Hethley. I wanted to share my experiences, which unfortunately have mostly been negative when I have crossed these intersections as a driver. I have been surrounded with my car and unable to move it. I have been called nasty names. I, my license plate is dented where one of the guys kicked it. They have hit the sides of my car, they have sprayed my car. When they do the windshield, I can wash the windshield. But when they spray the sides of the car, I have to stop and wash the windows myself because I don't know what they're spraying on it. And it's unfortunate that the, my experiences are mostly negative. I too appreciate just how very complex the, the solutions to the question of why are these kids on these corners doing this work? That's a very different question than how do we keep everybody safe? I was shocked to learn that this is a hundred and seventeen youths that are causing this problem across the entire city. I was shocked to, to know that the city has documented, we have seven and ten-year-olds out there? That is, is just unconscionable. And I don't think that we should be, be providing incentives for this behavior to continue. The, the younger men, I have great sympathy for. The last time I encountered this, I thought, oh my God, it's so hot. Do I have any water to give them? And the next thing I know, they're, they're spraying my car when I ask them not to. So unfortunately, the sympathy very quickly goes out the window when there's such a lack of respect. No means no in this case, just don't do it. And they're not doing that. And it's incredibly troubling that the solution I'm giving as a driver is to pull over, call the cops. We now know that these children are armed and it's not worth my life to do that. But I, I'm kind of disappointed that I haven't heard more from the officials on the driver's side of it and what they are doing. I wouldn't want to create a criminal record for someone for engaging in this behavior. But it's also not right what they're doing. Thank you so very much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And that is all we have for testimony. I wanna thank everybody for the, the insights. Especially wanna thank Deputy Mayor Leach and Dr. Bunley and BPD, all the folks that played a party in, in this meeting. This conversation's not over. You know, I, I think we'll continue to see how the work that we've been doing and the changes that we have made are or are not working. And I think we need to be honest in that assessment. And I, you know, I think that the committee and the council extends itself as a resource in any way that we can be in finding a way to resolve these issues, both from the perspective of the legal perspective, but then also from the support services perspective. And I know the work is very hard, but clearly, we have very dedicated people doing the work. And so we appreciate you. With that, if no further questions or concerns from my colleagues, we're gonna go into recess. Thank you.